Great. I want to thank everybody for their indulgence of this board. Sorry, I know we're supposed to take, start about 6:30 and it's now almost eight?
Seven.
No, that hasn't been changed.
So. Item four, call back to order, pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Angel Herrer, a senior from John F. Kennedy High School, and Connie Ban and Alex Fang, both seniors from West Campus. You and I will do the closing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay there, stay there.
On October 17th, Sacramento City College and the Low End Theory Collaborative hosted their third annual Rock the School Bells event. Rock the School Bells is a free community event focusing on engaging Sacramento youth in a series of dynamic workshops on higher education, community, and self-development through hip hop culture. Sacramento City College and the Low End Theory Collaborative have been working in partnership with Sacramento City Unified School District for several years, offering thousands of students across our district an opportunity to engage with the arts, music, and hip hop education. With help from Angel Herrer, a senior from JFK High School, and Mike Brim, a member of the Low End Theory Collaborative and director of the Cypher Hip Hop Workshop, the Rock School Bells was able to recruit more than 100 students from eight different Sac City high schools to participate in this event. Seniors Alex Fang and Connie Ban from West Campus also played instrumental roles in the coordination for this event, handling much of the logistical duties for that day. The Board of Education is proud to recognize Angel Herrer, Alex Fang, and Connie Ban as our stellar students, and Mike Brim and the Low End Theory Collaborative as our stellar community organization.
Thank you. The microphone is yours. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I'm not really sure what to say. Didn't know I was going to be on a microphone.
Right there's the camera.
That's cool, too. But I really didn't know this was going to happen at all. When I volunteered for the Rock School Bells, it was honestly just out of the love for it because when I went there, it made a big impact on me and I felt like I wanted to give back to that. So when I volunteered for it, that's what I planned to do and...
Well, we appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Do colleagues want to say a few words?
So I really like volunteering since like my elementary school days. I've accumulated like over hundreds and hundreds of community service hours since my, till my senior year because I'm in like organizations such as Key Club, American Red Cross, Interact, CSF, NHS, and stuff. So these like organizations really helped, like make me really want to continue my service. And like I met Mike B. by some of the colleagues I worked with at the Surness Center. So I was just really glad that I was able to help and participate in this amazing opportunity.
Thank you. Would you like to tell us who you are?
My name is Connie Ban from West Campus.
My name is Angel Herr. I'm from Kennedy High School and I think, um, thank you, Mike B., for this opportunity and also all the staff here today because I think hip hop nowadays, it can be seen with such a negative outlook, but it can also be such powerful empowerment to students around if pushed in the right direction. So I think that's what Rock the School Bells can help do to students here in Sacramento. So I'm glad I was able to help out with that. So thank you.
Michael Angel. Mike?
I'd like to say thank you for acknowledging these students for their contributions for Rock the School. My name is Mike Brim, director of Cypher Hip Hop Workshops and member of the Low End Theory Collaborative. And yeah, I'd like to say thank you again for acknowledging these students for their work that day and the work that they put in leading up to the Rock the School Bells conference, very instrumental in making that day enjoyable for a number of students with the Sacramento City Unified School District. So thank you.
We have a few certificates of appreciation.
and will be cable cast without interruption with exception of technical problems on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on Comcast, the Consolidated Communications, and ATT U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, November 8th at 9:00 a.m., Monday, November 9th at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Members of the audience wishing to address the board should fill out a speaker identification form located in the back of the community room and give it to Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Ross, prior to the conclusions of the, of the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items not listed on the agenda. If you are found to be commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you will be asked to defer your item until it comes up on the agenda. Please turn off all cell phones or place them in a silent or vibrate mode.
Thank you very much. Item 5.0, announcements of action taken in closed session?
None, Mr. President.
Very good. Moving on to item 6.0, agenda adoption. Before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to note that staff has requested that 10.4 McKinley Village be pulled until next time. So with that, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a first, a motion. I have a second from Member Cochran. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 7.0, public comment. Mr. Ross?
We have four comments on 7.0. If the speakers can please line up behind the microphone in the order you're called. Glenn Destat, Cal Seifan, Rod Kunisaki, and Lindsay Philby, and Darlene Anderson.
Ever you're ready?
Can I start now?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Glenn Destat. I'm with the Sacramento Vegetarian Society and I would like to invite you all to the initial Sac Town Veg Fest, which we will be hosting right here at the Surness Center on January 30th. And we'd also like to have some support for the Veg Fest. We chose the Surness Center because we want to send like a healthy eating message to families and to young people about the effect of the food they eat on their health, their community, their environment, and well, let's face it, their future, and also just how darn good vegetarian food can taste. Our keynote speaker will be Kate Middleton, who is the Food Policy Director with the Humane Society of the United States. And among the things that she has done is worked with school districts, including Los Angeles, Detroit, and Boston, to help them implement a Meatless Monday program. And I could say a lot more because we're kind of excited about it, but I'm going to take the initiative and go to your website, send each one of you a little message, and it's going to have in it a couple of things. One is it's going to have a link to a four-minute and 45-second video titled, "Do Vegetarians Get Enough Protein?" Thanks to our friends in the dairy and meat industry, that's the perennial question, spoiler overt, we get more than enough protein. But there is something we don't get enough of, and just to keep you in suspense, you'll have to watch the video. It'll be well worth your time. The second thing I'm going to send to you is our little sponsorship package, which lays out a little bit about what we're doing, and will give you an opportunity to support this if you so desire, either as individuals or as a group. And I've got eight seconds left, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Look forward to the message. Pan?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Superintendent Jose Amanda. My name is Cal Seifan. I'm here as a board member of the nonprofit organization, Ill Men Community Service. Last year, we came before you and asked for your support with our 16th Annual Ill Men Student Conference. This year, I had the privilege and the honor of being the chair. I am here to share with you what we accomplished with your support. On October 28th, 2014, we hosted a conference at the University of California Davis at their Alumni Center. We had 275 participants. This numbers included 205 students, 20 Sac Unified School District staff, and 50 volunteers. We held workshops that focused on the men language, men artifacts, embroidery, clothing, and ceremonies. We brought in seniors from our community to share and inspire stories to enlighten our students of the struggles their parents and grandparents endure. We held leadership workshops to build our young leaders' confidence to be aware of social issues such as bullying and domestic violence. And we reinforced the scholistic requirements for our young individuals to attend college. With your help, we were able to fundraise additional 3,000 to award as scholarships. In addition, to remember the event, we asked our participants to handwrite any inspiring words that could be shared with us on a four-by-four inch piece fabric, which we turned into this quilt you see before you. As the chair of the 17th Annual Ill Men Student Conference, I am excited to announce that we will be hosting our 17th Annual IMSC at Sacramento State University, March 11th, 2016. We thank you and we look forward to your support again.
Thank you very much. Could you remind us what support we have provided, Sac City Unified has provided in the past?
We, you guys have provided funding for facilities that was hosted, we use at Sac State, transportation, getting the students from and to the location, supplies such as pens and paper, printing costs. We did not get support for lunch and we hope that that's one of the major causes of feeding the students when we're out there. We're hoping to get some support for lunch for the students out there. And we are actually looking to increase our participants and we get a lot of students that are not part of our community that do participate and they are enriched and by learning, and that really helps our community, too, to get students that are not part of our community to attend, so they can understand a little bit more about our culture. We also focus on inspiring and encouraging all students on all walks of life to pursue higher education. So we thank you guys very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Seifan. Oh, sorry. Cal?
I just wanted to comment that I actually had the pleasure of attending one of these events at Sac State a couple of years ago, and fantastic. I've enjoyed having my men students. I'd like to ask you specifically to call our emails. Let us know what you need specifically and keep us apprised of all events so we can attend them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Kunisaki?
I guess we're here, we were here just to come and observe, to try to figure this all out, but under the advice of Mr. Lambert and Mary Harden and Jay, that he thought we should at least, since we're here, we should at least introduce ourselves. So I'm, my name is Rod Kunisaki and we're part of the, we store the ROR Board. It's an athletic alumni to support athletics at CK McClellan. We were formed in 2007 and this is Lindsay Philby.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Philby. Mom alumni.
And so she, so both of us were here just to observe, but we were formed in '07 and we know that, that we need to build partnerships and relationships, so we were just here to introduce ourselves and, because at some point in the future, I think it'd be important that we do build these relationships with the board. So that's why we're here initially. I'm sure we'll, hopefully we'll be back in the future with more information.
I'd just like to specifically thank Jay. Jay's attended several of our meetings and been incredibly informative and sort of casting some light on what we need to do to get things done that we would like to get done, and we're just here to support him, support you. So thanks very much.
Thank you for what you do with, for our children. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, Darlene Anderson. As a parent of a special needs student and understanding that there are serious concerns about special education in this district, I'm really trying to understand exactly what does the SDC look like. It is not a program, and in many forms and fashions, it comes to an understanding, people think it is a program and that they think kids get in there and they get services based on SDC. SDC is really a smaller class size that's supposed to enable students to maintain educational options in the general curriculum. But somehow, it got misconstrued and people think that they can align those goals with the lowest performing special education student in that classroom. And so they're writing goals for students with other disabilities. And it's really kind of crazy. And there's problems, serious problems in RSP, too, because I have a student who recently moved from SDC to RSP with no support. And apparently where he's at, they have 59 students for one teacher and they're looking for another teacher. And I understand, but what do you do when you're already failing and then you get to move into an environment where there's little or no support? I just have a real concern that the federal government sets the standards for special education, and they are what all other children have a right to have, which is a basic education. You know, putting kids on these tracks where they're getting certificates of completion and allowing them to get a certificate and that somehow graduating them, we're just throwing them to jail. We're just throwing them away. And I think that I am going to move forward and help the students that I'm helping. We are going to have our day in court, but this district really needs to step up. There's so much work to do and none of it has been done in Special Education Department, none. And it's really sad and it's unfortunate, but many parents have children in special ed who are not doing well and they don't know how to get the help. But one way to get the help is to read and understand the federal, the federal register because it tells you what your rights are. And there are many rights for children with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Smith?
I just had one question for you, just really quick. I was just wondering, because you mentioned the problems you've seen with these programs and the one child that you knew who went through these things. So I was wondering, are you seeing this in just one school or are you seeing it across the board?
I'm seeing it across the board.
In all levels of school?
Not necessarily all levels. Some, some schools automatically have more support because they have more parent engagement and they have more affluent parents. And so people who have money are not going to let their children fail. But in environments where there are a lot of poverty and people don't understand their rights, they're thrown into these classrooms as if they are support structures. They are just 13 kids in a classroom, which should enable them to have the support that they need, but they're still not getting it and it's frightening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8.0, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Member Hanson?
Yeah, I would like to second, but just give a quick shout out to one of our staff members, James Urbiling, who's, is part of a consent calendar item, who had a brilliant idea and we're working with him on helping share that with other districts. Just really wanted to applaud his entrepreneurialism and thank him for thinking outside the box and hope that, you know, inspires all of us to do everything that we can, you know, to improve our district and to share good ideas and, you know, it's going to be profitable for everyone, too. So there's nothing wrong with that, helping out our school district as well.
Thank you, Member Hanson. So I have a second from Member Hanson, following a motion from Vice President Pritchard on in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Keep surfing, Jim. Oh, we didn't know that. Let's play it. I'm interested. Oh, after we... Thank you very much. Jim, would you stand and be recognized, please, and thank you for your contributions to Sac City Unified? So you're the inventor of this trash lifter?
I'm actually...
Well, come up to the podium, please.
I worked for the district since 1996. Richard Raymond, the supervisor for custodial staff, came to me looking for a solution to a lot of back injuries due to lifting garbage cans. He saw a device that I had invented to help the glazing department out and he asked me if I could build something that would raise garbage cans to the dumpster. There was no simple solution. And actually, to this day, there's still no simple solution to that problem. We really have the only idea out there that actually works well. So with his help and with the support of Sac City Unified, they supported me in the welding department to go ahead and design a machine and we came up with a good design and it was an original idea, it was unique, and it was patentable. So the district owns the patent on that.
Well, thank you for your hard work. Moving on to item 9.0, communications. 9.1, employee organization, CSA? SCTA?
Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and members of the school board. Nikki Malewski, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. Boy, it's hard to believe that November is already here. It feels like we've been working absolutely nonstop this year. So tonight, I wanted to give you an overall update on a number of different initiatives underway with the district. First, as you know, we've been really pushing the district to accelerate class size reduction. The past three years, the district has received an additional $67 million in ongoing annual state funding, an increase of $2,145 per student. Of those dollars, over $12 million were specifically credited for class size reduction, of which to date, the district has spent only $5 million. In short, we believe the district can do better and we would like to work with you to do that. Second, we are working with the academic office to improve professional learning. We look forward to developing a program that's both supportive and useful to teachers. Third, we've begun to meet with the district about the challenges of special education. This is an incredibly complex and multi-layered set of issues, but the success of our first meeting, the first of what we know will be many, gives us hope that we can come up with something that meets the needs of our district's children. Lastly, and there are many, but all I can fit in at this... Oh, you didn't even start the timer. All right, I can go on and on. Aw, man, you just started it. I could go on and on forever. All right. We have been trying to engage the district in how best to recruit and retain certificated staff. As you know, the additional revenue the district received this year alone, $29 million in ongoing dollars plus an additional $16 million of one-time allocations, enables us to reopen the contract for wage enhancements. We remain disappointed regarding the district's refusal to accelerate class size reduction, but as a result, we've been able to engage in negotiations around wage enhancements. We have demonstrated that Sac City teachers, on average, around an average 18 to 30 percent behind surrounding districts of San Juan, El Grove, and Folsom-Cordova, and hope we have made the case that the district should make wages for its educators more competitive. We next meet with the district on November 10th and hope that when this board meets next, we will reach an agreement that will make it much easier to recruit and retain teachers for our children. So thank you very much.
Thank you, President Wuski. Teamsters? Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Superintendent Banda, President Wu, members of the board. My name is Peter Lambert and I'm president of UPE, United Professional Educators, representing 143 elementary, middle, and high school and district-level administrators. At the October 1st board meeting, we spoke to you about the move to an earlier start in August. Since that time, we have conducted our own internal survey among our UPE members. Of those voting, an overwhelming 82% are in favor of the earlier start time around August 15th to end the first semester before winter break. Only 11% favored this year's start time prior to Labor Day, and 7% preferred leaving the start time the way it has been in the past after Labor Day. We believe that this is just the beginning of a series of changes that will increase the efficiency and effectiveness of our district. We hope to be part of the discussion as we move forward in making Sacramento City Unified School District the best place to get a quality education within our area.
I'm Dennis Peterson. I'm the executive director for UPE. At a recent conference of administrators representing the larger urban school districts in the state, to include LA, San Diego, Long Beach, San Francisco, Oakland, Sacramento, San Juan, and others, we discussed school's calendar start dates. All districts have a mid-August start date except Long Beach and San Diego, and they are working to move to a mid-August start. Some comments from our survey include, "We need to be able to compete and hire quality teachers. The earlier the start, the better." It has been extremely difficult to hire teachers given the late start date. Another one, "We need to be more competitive in the neighboring districts when it comes to hiring processes, and earlier start time will help us accomplish this goal." Best for students, AP testing, sports, college, summer jobs, hiring staff. And finally, "We are unable to compete with other districts regarding recruitment due to our late start." For example, my school... For example, my school mentors four to six student teachers per year, and we have never been able to hire any of them as they secure jobs well before SCUSD considers hiring." Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Nope. Oh, Ms. Berry.
Oh, sorry. Uh, two quick questions. I was wondering, I wasn't sure if I heard right, but for this survey, was it only administrators that you surveyed?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then, um... Thank you.
To clarify, we represent one hundred and forty-three certificated supervisors, so it includes site administrators and many district office personnel.
Thank you, student member Barry. Thank you. Moving on, nine point two, district parent advisory committees. The community advisory committee. Miss Sutherland.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angela Sutherland. I'm the chair of the community advisory committee.
I'm Angel Garcia, the secretary for the community advisory committee.
So first off, um, we wanted to express appreciation for some of the district's staff and teachers who've attended our last couple of meetings. Our October twentieth workshop was supporting students who have special needs with academics, organization, and accommodations to access the Common Core standards. And we had several teachers show up from different schools, um, teaching in different settings and different grade levels, and they discussed their challenges and their successes so far with, uh, teaching using the new, um, teaching towards the new Common Core standards, and parents were able to ask questions and learn ways to support their students at home and at school. And so, just want to say thank you to, uh, Kami Ito. She's an intermediate special-day class teacher at Cesar Chavez. Brienne Pitcherily, a special education support teacher at Leah Tata Floyd. And then Lauren Anderberg, she's a resource specialist with the Special Education Department. Mary Deems is an RSP teacher at Willsey Wood. Uh, Scott Spites is a special-day class teacher at Hiram Johnson. And also, thank you to Becky Bryant for helping put that together, and then Dr. Iris Taylor from the academic office for also coming and sharing her support. Angel's going to talk about the last meeting where we had the school resource officers and the safety office come.
So on October twenty-seventh, we had a general meeting, and one of our discussions was school resource officers. Ms. Delgado, Nina Delgado, attended. Sergeant Chris Taylor, Lieutenant Sean Rogers, and the McClatchy, um, School Resource Officer. It was a success. I came in really, uh, wanting to drill them with questions, um, and thinking that the conversation was going to go a certain way. They are amazing. I mean, the district should be really proud of our SROs and what they're doing. They're doing great things at their school. They talked about their hiring process and how, um, SROs are hired. These people want to be working with youth, they want to be working in our community. They talked about various examples, taking kids to King's Da- Games, you know, going and visiting kids because they haven't been attending school, and figuring out they're being bullied every day because they're LGBT, or they don't have a ride to school, or they don't have shoes. I mean, these men and women are going out, um, above and beyond and out of their job description to really take care of our students, so I wanted to highlight them. Um, they collaborate, they collaborate with their communities, and they learn as much about the children that they can. An example was that they have sought out seven different trainings in sixteen months. These are sought out by, by them, and, um, they are the best of the best selected. Like I said, I came and expected the conversation to go in a different direction, but I'm glad I learned what I did. I just want to say, great job for our student resource officers in our district.
Thank you.
And then, um, just a couple more things. I just wanted to invite everyone out to our parent forum, November seventeenth, Tuesday, six-thirty to eight-thirty. We've given you all flyers, and our website has the, the flyers and the face, our Facebook page as well. We did also get our brochure in Spanish, Diana. I didn't bring it tonight, but we have that now, which is a positive. You can give it out to your families. Um, we, we will be at William, uh, Land Park tomorrow, uh, not tomorrow, sorry, Saturday for the Down Syndrome Info Alliance Annual Walk and Run. Um, so we'll have an outreach table there for families, and, um, there's entertainment. You can still register the day of if you show up at the park. And lastly, uh, Nikki from the teachers' union was expressing how she's hoping, um, for some good outcomes as far as the special education negotiations. I just wanted to say the CAC is hoping for that as well, so hoping to work together and, um, come up with some good supports for our teachers and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. District Advisory Council? District English Learner Advisory Committee? Gifted and Talented Education Advisory Committee? Sacramento Council of Parent-Teacher Association? Moving on to item nine point three, superintendent's report. Superintendent?
Thank you very much, President Wu. Now, something I feel very passionately, passionate about is that every student at every school deserves equal access to opportunities for success. When I think back about the opportunities that I had growing up in the Central Valley back in the sixties, uh, they were very challenging times, and it was because of people that really cared, teachers, principal, and obviously my parents, who really encouraged me to achieve and work hard to be successful. And without those people, I don't know where I would have ended up. And so, with that in mind, you know, we are very fortunate to live in a community that is incredibly diverse. With that diversity comes a diverse set of needs for the students that we serve. There's an adage in education that equity doesn't mean equal. Sometimes people equate those, right? It's an important part of the discussion. It's not about making sure that every student is necessarily treated exactly the same. It's about making sure that every student gets what he or she needs in order to be successful. Equity is a key to our success as a district. It isn't an isolated topic, it's intrinsic to everything that we do. As we begin the process of revising our strategic plan, we will be focusing on equity. We've selected the National Equity Project to partner with us on this work for this year and then moving forward. The National Equity Project is an Oakland-based group that is committed to making real, sustainable change throughout large systems, very similar to Sacramento City. They will be working with my district leadership team throughout the year, as well as with our school principals. The goal of this work is to be, is, is to begin having the hard conversations that are necessary in order to really move the needles for our students. This isn't easy work, but it's really critical work, and we're committed to that. In the last week, I attended three events at our schools that showcased the work of our sites and our communities to, to support our students. On October the twenty-eighth, Chicas Latinas de Sacramento gave away more than four hundred pairs of new shoes to students at Woodbine Elementary. That meant every student at school was given a new pair of properly-sized shoes. You know, one of the things that I take away is I was there assisting students, but there was one particular student, young man, a fifth grader, who came up, and I had to find him a rather, actually, some pretty good-sized shoes. He was a pretty, pretty big foot, but he was so excited to have the opportunity to actually select a pair of running shoes, uh, athletic shoes. And the funny part is, as soon as I got him on him and I laced him up, he took off. I didn't, he didn't, didn't even have a chance to say anything to him. He was ready to go and ready to roll. Uh, but, you know, to see the faces of our children, to be able to receive a new pair of shoes, and also, um, uh, pairs of socks. So we had also people who, who donated pairs of socks, and I do want to, um, uh, highlight the fact that Board Member Rodriguez was there, and she's a part of this group, and was very instrumental in making sure that, uh, we had them there, uh, to support our school. On October thirtieth, the district partnered with the California Office of Traffic Safety on the Halloween-themed Safety Fair at Willsey Wood Middle School. OTS handed out hundreds of drawstring, uh, backpacks that were made of reflective fabric. There was a selfie station for kids to pose for pictures with Pete Walker, who is the OTS mascot. Interestingly enough, I had just seen that commercial with the volume turned off, and I didn't have a clue what that was, the gentleman with the walking with the door and the whatnot. And I finally get the gist, that, you know, people think sometimes that, uh, we're invincible, we're out there, and we have to be very mindful, especially our students, be very mindful of traffic, and, and making sure they use crosswalks, and making sure that, that they're very observant about, uh, the, the vehicles that are coming up and down our streets. Um, so it was a really nice reminder for students, but it was done in a very fun way for them to be able to, uh, remember that. Sacramento Police was also there, they donated twenty-five bike helmets for students who needed them, and Walk Sacramento provided information to students on staying safe as they make their way to and from school. It was a great event, I want to thank all the partners for their work to make it a success. Then on Tuesday, we cut the ribbon at California Middle School, Cal Middle Schools newly renovated and expanded gym. The old gym was built in nineteen seventy-five, and after forty years, really needed not just expansion, but needed some modernization. Um, so the project built on that tradition of the original gym, but added some new amenities, such as air conditioning, heating, uh, nice flooring, and made it much safer and much a healthier place for students to, uh, exercise and play. The project was funded by Measure R, which, uh, the facilities bond approved, that was approved by our Sacramento voters in twenty-twelve. So also want to take this opportunity to thank the voters, and know that that money that you supported us getting is going for, uh, very good projects and serving our students well. Uh, last night, we held our annual fall graduation ceremony. This year was held at Rosemont High School, so thank you, Rosemont, for hosting that. Forty-five students were awarded diplomas. These are students who fell short of the, uh, meeting graduation requirements last spring, but committed to working over the summer to finish up. It was a small but very nice ceremony that recognized the perseverance and the resiliency of these young people. And you know, the, the level of excitement and engagement from family members and all those in attendance was the same as it was for two thousand students of a comprehensive high school, so, uh, kids were really excited and, and well-deserved recognition for them. Finally, I'm very excited to announce that our twenty-fifteen United Way Giving Campaign is now underway. Our goal this year is to raise seventy thousand dollars with seventy percent participation rate. In the coming days, we will track contributions via, via, uh, a meter or thermometer on our website. You can join us by promoting our campaign on social media with, uh, the hashtag #SACGIVESBACK. The district's twenty-fifteen United Way Campaign runs through Monday, November, uh, the thirtieth, so want to encourage everybody to get online or whatever mode that you like in terms of, of contributing. We know that the United Way, uh, is a well-known organization that funds a lot of important, um, uh, organizations throughout Sacramento that give back to our families and our students. So information about the campaign, including how, how to contribute online, is available on our website as well, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. President's report, nine point four. I'd like to start out, from time to time, you know, our schools do great things, and we don't often, uh, get to highlight those wonderful things that our schools do. And so, uh, this, this past summer, uh, New Tech had an opportunity, well, they won, uh, the Chadwick Social Justice Award, and I think we have a video on that? A short video.
And now I get to transition and do one of the things I also love to do the most, and that is to, um, introduce the first of what will be a few recognitions this week, and that is to announce the twenty-fifteen Chadwick Award. And for those of you who've been part of the network for a while, you know that we started this several years ago as a way to honor a school that particularly serves students who arrive in high school or typically, um, arrive not having their students perform at, uh, grade levels, they're typically students whom we would call underserved, and a school that takes the time to overcome challenges too many to name.
You may not know this, but this school is one of one hundred and eighty-eight-plus other schools across the country, including some in China and Australia, that are all seeking to do the same thing that this school is, which is to try to do the best job they can to prepare every single student to be successful in the world after they exit this school. One of the things that, uh, Lydia Domins, who's, uh, our president of the organization, presented the award, uh, did mention is that, so there were several staff members that were walking on stage, and what they'd been doing prior to walking on stage was running a lot of the sessions at our national conference for over two thousand people, sharing some of the great things that they've learned about how to help students be successful, and that's a big reason why we selected our school for this award. Not only are they really good at meeting students where they are and helping them figure out the best path forward, regardless of what they come with, um, they're really good at sharing and helping other people at other schools, other communities learn from them, both the great successes and the failures, the things that they've had to figure out when they realize something wasn't going the way that they planned. So, uh, it is a deep honor of mine to present these amazing colleagues in this school community with the Chadwick Social Justice Award.
There's just so much to love that I don't have a good answer.
Everything in general, to be honest.
I like that it's a small school, so you guys all know each other.
I love everything about New Tech, especially students, because they're my friends, everyone's friends.
I like that New Tech gives you the freedom to be whoever you want to be.
The experience of learning new things here.
New Tech, I like that it's small, and it's great, and I know all the students.
It's like you, you're small and great.
I'm small and great.
I like that my son has done really well in here today.
What do you like about New Tech?
Uh, not bad.
Everything. It is super awesome, definitely prepares you for college, um, teachers are awesome, you will learn to love them after you leave, just kind of sad, uh, so love them now.
What do you like about New Tech?
Yeah, we like what New Tech.
Yeah, what do you like about New Tech?
What do you like about New Tech?
What do you want to experience in New Tech?
What do you want to experience in New Tech? What do you like about New Tech? Yeah.
What do I like about New Tech?
I like the principal.
Oh, yeah.
I like the staff at New Tech. I like how New Tech allows you to be open.
And I love all the teachers at New Tech.
I love New Tech. Been here eleven years. I love the students, I love the fact it's a small school, I love project-based learning, I love the individual relationships you can have with the kids, I love combined lunches.
I like the communication with the teachers and the principal.
The students.
It's pretty fun, everybody knows everybody, everybody makes new friends, everybody comes close together.
We like the teachers.
Feels like a family already. I've only been here three weeks, and it feels good.
I think of every year here as a treasure.
I love the whole environment and what it means to teach here. I couldn't imagine teaching anyplace else.
It's just an awesome school.
Well... There was a, uh, a person in that video who, I think he was the only person that said he liked the... So...
Surprise birthday party!
Are we done? Thank you, Ann. So I would like to invite that person up here to express, uh, what he thinks about New Tech, and let us know why it is that he likes the principal. Principal Durham, would you please come up? Share with us your thoughts on that.
Back there somewhere. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come up here and say great things about my school. Um, actually, this is my first year at New Tech, and I've taken the time to find out why the school was awarded the Chadwick Award for Social Justice. And, uh, without question, it has nothing to do with program or how we spend our resources, it's how our people treat each other, uh, how our parents work with our teachers, how our teachers work with our students, and most importantly, how our students, uh, trust and respect each other and the way they work with one another. In, uh, some of the educational circles I run, uh, we often have conversations about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and when Maslow's needs are met, then we can get the blooms, and you can't work on high-quality instructional pedagogy if those base needs aren't met, and, uh, that is one thing that Sacramento and New Tech is doing well and is working to improve.
Thank you, Principal.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, I wanted to, um, report that, um, Sac, uh, Sac City Unified participated on October twenty-eighth with the third annual... with the Third Annual National Bullying Prevention Month that was celebrated here at the north steps of the Capitol. And I'm proud to say, and I want to thank Member Ryan for stopping by, that we had the second and third grade, I believe, from Ethel Phillips, and we had the seventh grade from Albert Einstein, for a total of 230 students learning about bullying prevention. And I also want to thank Jessica Wharton and her staff for coming out and staffing the booth and also educating people on anti-bullying measures. We had speakers. We had Bobby Singh Allen, who's president of the Elk Grove Unified School District. We had the U.S. Attorney from the Eastern District. We had our sheriff. We had Senator Pan. We had Assembly Member Kevin McCarty. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. And I'd like to give an opportunity to Member Ryan to say a few words about her participation at the rally.
So Darrell, President Wu, you were the anchor there that day. But as you know, bullying prevention is an issue that's close to my heart. And I'm so proud that we have Jessica Wharton leading that work within the district. I was, I will tell you, delighted to see students from Ethel Phillips attending and had a chance to talk with them about how they're trying to build a culture of inclusivity at their school, which I think is beautiful and a model for what we should be doing across the district.
Thank you. So lastly, because we don't have this opportunity from Area 6 to say this very often, I wanted to give a shout-out to Kennedy High School because after a short period of time ago, they had a 28-game losing streak for their football team. And yesterday, they were written about in the Sacramento Bee. And this, and tomorrow, they're going into this game eight-and-one, and they're going to play Burbank High School. So now, it wasn't like I was set up to do this, but having an eight-and-one season, I'm very, very proud. And I think that we're going to do very, very well tomorrow night. This is a little throw-down for a Member Rodriguez, you know. And, but I have to say, I want to thank the people of Sacramento City because they have approved bonds, which have allowed us to make improvements at our schools. Burbank High was the first one with a brand-new field, and the following year, they just came roaring back in football. Kennedy High School just finished theirs a couple of years ago, and now finally, they're roaring back in football. But more importantly, and I was talking to Principal Van Natten today out at Kennedy High School, the kids walk around proudly because they have something to display. They don't have a field filled with gopher holes anymore. And so it is wonderful recognition for our parents who voted for these bond measures for us that allow us to give something, to make improvements at our schools for our students, and our students are responding in kind. So I want to make sure that that was noted. Moving on, we have 9.5 Student Member Report. Member Barry. I'm going to put my shirt and tie back on.
Thank you. First, I want to talk about the Student Advisory Council. We have been working these past couple of months on our first newsletter that will be going out digitally and in paper on all school sites pretty soon. We're just, we have all of our articles together from several schools. I just want to talk about it a little bit because it's completely student-voiced and youth-led. And some of the articles are about politics, like Donald Trump, or they're about the environment, or college, or feminism. And they're all written by all students, and they're not being censored, and I think that's incredible. The second thing I'd want to talk about also goes with some of what's been said today with bullying. And so this week at my high school west campus, it's the National, or not National, it's Suicide Awareness Week, which I think is a very important topic when... Yeah. And so yesterday, Wednesday, we had an assembly at school where the Brave Society came to talk to us. And even though it's Suicide Awareness Week, they mostly focus on how bullying, like creates suicide. It all started with this boy. His name was Michael Berry. And he was, he went to Maraloma High School, which I know is in our district, but it's pretty close. And he was being bullied in his high school, and no one really knew about it until on his 17th birthday, he took a gun to school and he shot himself. And then afterwards, the entire school rallied around and they brought his mom posters with like saying, "We're so sorry." And you know, he was such a great person and everyone really loved him. But the thing was, the point of the assembly was they didn't tell him that before. They waited until after. And so actually, how it started is his mom, who was at the assembly, she had, she wanted to do something about it. She just didn't want to sit around and let it happen to someone else's kid. So she created the Brave Society, and they work around with not just our school district, but also San Juan School District. And the assembly was completely incredible, and it had an emotional effect on every single person in that room. And it talks about how every word you says has impact on someone. And even though you may just be joking, you don't know how the other person takes it. And to me, this is very personal because during the assembly, I looked to my friend next to me and she was crying because her sister, her little sister, who was in our school district, she was being bullied at her school. And I'd tried to attempt suicide five times. And thankfully now, they had talked to the principal, and as of this year, it's over and she's not being bullied anymore, but the effects are still there, and she's still dealing with it every day. And I think it's great that there are things like the National Bullying Month and that there's the thing at the Capitol, and I know there are all these events that are going to bullying. But I think it's just important to know that it's still a big issue and it hasn't gone away.
Thank you, Student Member Barry. I have two, so I'm going to call Member Rodriguez first. Member, oh, this is, did you want to make comments on the, on Member Barry's report? Okay. So information sharing by board members. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Wu. And yeah, I'll include my comments about Student Board Member Barry's report. I think every one of us has been affected by someone who has either contemplated suicide or someone who has actually been, unfortunately for all of us, successful at committing suicide. So I happen to live in both of those experiences myself. As a peer, student peer counselor, I had talked to many students who were contemplating suicide when I was a student, high school student myself. And as an adult, unfortunately, I lost a very, very, very good friend to suicide. So I understand the gravity of the issue, and I really welcome and appreciate that there is a focus. Now it's more public, so thank you for bringing that to everyone's awareness and attention. And I know that there's a lot of work that's being done in our high schools about this and middle schools and below. So now, about my report. You know, two years ago, I went on a campaign, a personal campaign, to be a change. And I was at Woodbine Elementary School and drove around the neighborhood and noticed that the neighborhood had been not taken care of. And that's not a school member activity. We don't take care of the surrounding neighborhood around A's particular school. However, as a leader in the community, as someone who dares to get elected into a position, I think it's all of our responsibilities then to try to be a change in those communities. And so two years ago, I think maybe three years ago, right? Was it Christina? Three years ago? We did our first neighborhood cleanup at Woodbine Elementary School. And I had showed a video here, brought people forward who had volunteered, gave them certificates. The next year after that, Chicas Latinas of Sacramento had heard that we were doing this activity for Woodbine Elementary School, and they decided that they wanted to be part of the change as well for that neighborhood. And they organized an effort to do a neighborhood cleanup so that children could walk safely to school with unobstructed sidewalks, but they didn't give up there. They said, you know, not only did we want to make streets safe for students to walk on, we're going to do a shoe drive because we see the needs of that community, and we're going to bring those children shoes so that they can walk in new shoes safely down clean streets to get to school. And that's exactly what they did on October 28th. They raised over 700 pairs of shoes. And let me tell you a little bit about Chicas Latinas. They don't get any money to do what they do. It's 100% volunteer-run. Nobody gets paid. They go out on their own time. They solicit donations. They raise shoes or socks or whatever it is on behalf of communities that are in need on their own, with their own time, sometimes pulling out of their own pocket. And to see the joy on the children's faces that day, but you had to take a step back and you had to look at the school community as a whole. The tears in the staff's eyes, the tears in the principal's eyes, but they weren't tears of sadness. They were tears of joy. Nobody had ever thought to come to that school of such high need to give you that type of love and affection for children that they didn't even know. They had personal shoppers that would take the student and fit them individually with their own pair of shoes, just as Superintendent Bonda explained his joy when he fit a student with a pair of shoes. So just want to challenge you all to be a change in our community. It doesn't take much. All it takes is someone who wants to think that they want to be a change and they want to give back to the community. So with that, I challenge you, but if you want to do a project in collaboration with me or other board members, we're all up for the challenge. We're all here to help you and to organize and to help move that along. Speaking of being a change and doing community efforts, I was part of Council Member Larry Carr's Advisory Committee. And that is a committee that is going to be focused more on a Latino issue side for Area 5. There's a 30% population in Council Member Carr's area of his, what he represents. And in a lot of my schools in Area 5, we have a large population of Latino families as well. Yet our needs are not getting taken care of for those particular families. And so without the focus, without the drive, and without somebody putting some attention onto it, we probably won't get those needs fixed. So I thank, you know, and welcome Larry Carr's invitation to this advisory committee. But if anyone else is interested in becoming a member of this committee, please see me after this meeting or email me. My contact information is on the web. Cesar Chavez Intermediate School had a nice fair for, they gave healthy foods to families to take home, healthy food recipes, and we also had some health services out there that talked about the need of healthy eating and the reduction of diabetes. We also had a parent meeting at Susan B. Anthony. Lots of activity happening at that school. That is one of our MONG immersion programs, and MONG New Year's coming up. And so if anyone wants to be involved in those activities, please see me or call the school and ask how you could be a part of that. I was part of the Luther Burbank High School Bug Day, where we did a community garden cleanup. And we started, we planted some plants out there. Some, I planted echinacea and got to talk to the many students and community members that were out at that day. And lastly, I want to make a big announcement and a big source of pride for me personally. But one of our Sacramento City Unified School District parents, Kristin Wright, she's been somebody who has advised not only myself, but others that I have given that resource to. And one of these persons was my cousin Kayla Rodriguez, who lives in the Imperial Valley area, which is far down north, south of California. She has a child, my second cousin, who has Down Syndrome. And there, those two have been working together. She's also a teacher. She works for the County Office of Ed in Imperial Valley. Well, recently, just as of late yesterday, she was approved and given the honor of being on the Advisory Committee for the Special Education Committee for the California Department of Education. So I am so very proud of her. And if it wasn't for Ms. Kristin Wright, who's our own Sacramento City Unified School District parent with a kid, the child that has special needs, that connection wouldn't have happened. So I want to thank her and I want to congratulate Kayla Rodriguez for that big honor. And lastly, I'm going to say, President Wu, go Titans. Go blue and gold and bring it tomorrow.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. Member Ryan?
So as many people know, through the miracle of adoption, I am an adoptive mother. And so I wanted to bring to attention of the school district that November is actually National Adoption Awareness Month. And this is important because there are more than 1.5 million adoptive families in the United States. In California, there are 62,000 foster youth. And in the Sacramento area alone, there are nearly 3,000 children that are currently waiting for families. I say all of this because part of National Adoption Awareness Month is an expectation that we use this opportunity to educate and inform others about what it means to be an adoptive family. As a mother to a kindergartner in Sacramento City Unified School District, I have begun to experience the dilemma of having to describe why we are a conspicuous family, why I might like look very different from my Black and Latino children, and what it means to be part of an adoptive family. I've asked the school district to share with educators and school sites across Sacramento City Unified School District a tool called Adoption Assignments in School for educators and parents. I experienced on my own this last month the dilemma of having my daughter confronted with two assignments, one developing a family tree, another being asked to bring in pictures starting at birth when she only came into our family at three years old. And so this idea that we can begin these conversations by providing some reading about what adoption means and what non-traditional families look like, and also some language into the classrooms that help recognize that we have a very different composition of families across the Sacramento area, I think is important and will help ensure that our students feel like they're welcomed in their schools and can embrace their differences without feeling like they're outcast because of them. I also wanted to talk about a couple of events that I've participated in recently that I hope will inform our strategic plan and the district priorities moving forward. One of them being last week's Regional Education Summit, hosted, co-hosted by Chancellor Brian King of Los Rios Community College District alongside the new president of California State University System Sacramento, President Robert Nelson. I'm very happy to say that Dr. Iris Taylor was in attendance. And the focus of the day was how do we work in better partnership regionally to ensure that our K-12 system is aligned both with college readiness and with workforce needs. And the hope is, based on this conversation that centered around data, around improving performance and ensuring greater preparation and completion once students are actually through the doors of college, we'll be able to develop a regional blueprint to tackle various pieces of this work as stakeholders in the system. I'm also happy to say that last week I had a chance to be part of several harvest festivals at my school sites. I was joking this morning that my five-year-old daughter, Brooklyn, said that she got firsthand to experience the good piece of school boarding, as she calls the verb of the work I do. Sometimes she says, "Mommy, I don't like that you're schoolboarding so much." But that day, she loved schoolboarding. She loved visiting schools and getting to pet animals at Hollywood Park Elementary that brought in animals from a local farm, got a chance to interact with Mr. Cooper, who many of you know is a local hero on the musical circuit, and had a chance to go to... Hollywood Park Elementary's Harvest Festival that night and Pacific Elementary, where she got down to the Thriller, which was great. I wanted to give a big shout out to Principals Henley Luke and Principal Oscar Garcia and their team for all of the hard work they put into those events, bringing out literally hundreds of families at each of the school sites for a really positive, community-centered evening. I also had the opportunity to co-host alongside my wonderful colleague, Member Cochran, an event with David Lubin Elementary School, really as a means of letting people in the North Oak Park community and the East Sacramento community know what a wonderful neighborhood school they have access to. It was a great opportunity for us to host at Sac High, a key location in North Oak Park, a forum that included food, demonstrations of the STEAM project at grade level, very interactive for students and families to participate in. We provided raffle prizes, but ultimately, we talked up the great work at David Lubin. And I'm very happy to say that we had about 100 people in attendance and 10 new families that are touring and signing up to be part of David Lubin as a result of understanding the benefits of that wonderful neighborhood school. And then finally, I just wanted to share, because I think that this is a critical issue as we talk about using data to inform our decision-making, and we talk about equities and disparities and outcomes for students of color across the Sacramento City Unified School District. Often, our Asian-American population is treated as a monolithic hole. And we know that that is not representative of true success rates for our Asian-American students. I'm very proud to say that a first-of-its-kind report was put out recently in my day job at the Campaign for College Opportunity called "The State of Higher Education for Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders." And what it found, I think, was very troubling on the K-12 preparation front and very relevant to Sacramento, given our large Pacific Islander population, and really what this means in terms of making sure that they're actually getting access to A- through G coursework and completing Prepared to Succeed in Post-Secondary Education. What we found is that for students in Asian-Pacific Islander populations, unfortunately, they were less than 50% on track to be four-year college-ready. And if you were in a group such as Samoan group, a MONG or Cambodian group, your likelihood of actually having four-year college readiness curriculum was only about 27%. So you can think of what the implications of that are for our families that are looking to us to ensure that we're preparing their students for a better lives. One of the things that we recommended and that was talked about at the regional convening I mentioned earlier with Chancellor King and President Nelson, was this idea that we need to expand college knowledge beginning in elementary school. We have to lift educational aspirations, but then beyond that, make sure that all students are being put on a four-year college readiness track. And so I just put that out because I think as we talk about our strategic plan, as we talk about LCAP moving forward, equity needs to be at the center of that and in every one of our goals. We need to measure that. We need to have honest and courageous conversations around data. And frankly, we need to do a better job for these populations that are looking to us for their future success.
Thank you, Member Ryan, for that, for doing the work outside of schoolboarding. That's a new sport, right? We're going to see it in the Olympics, at the next Olympics, schoolboarding. Second Vice President, Hanson.
Thank you, President Wu. Just a couple of things to report on. Joined Superintendent Banda and Mary and some other folks, joined us at Cal Middle School for a really exciting opening and expansion of their Cal Middle School gym was great. So the new athletic and academic expansion is really going to be a positive for the students there. It's the first time in the history of the school, which is 80 years, that they've been able to have all the students in the school together at one time. So that's pretty remarkable. And they really, some cool things happened. When they were tearing up the floor, they found the old original seal on the floor of the gymnasium from 1933 that they restored. One of the parents restored, repainted it, made it part of the centerpiece of the gymnasium. So that was really fun. And the students had a great time. And the boys' and girls' basketball team coming out of Cal Middle School is going to be fantastic. And I know it's going to keep our winning tradition going at McClatchy, when they all go there to go play for our state champion McClatchy Girls Basketball Team. Now, we'll move the boys up too, because they'll get lots of practice. Wanted to thank the student government at McClatchy High School. They helped me with a vote on the school calendar. We always talk about all the work that we're doing here for the students. Oftentimes, it's easy to forget asking students what it is, if what we're doing is something that they like. So they conducted a survey for me of the student body. They did nine through 11 grades so far, and then they're doing the seniors this week. But the results so far of the students was 40-60 against changing the calendar, just FYI for the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. We'll see if it changes for the 12th grade students. But I appreciate them doing that. We worked together on the survey. That was a fun project. And just on the McClatchy bandwagon, we had a great homecoming parade, so that's always a ton of fun. I appreciate all the hard work that goes into that and the folks that participate there. See our fearless principal on a horse this year, so stealing a little bit from Rosemont, but we appreciate borrowing that. It was a lot of fun. And then Restore the Roar meetings and the PTA there has kept me tied into the community very well. And I really appreciate both of you coming today and this evening and seeing what we do and spreading the good work that you're doing at the school. Really makes an impact. And you're helping the 2,500 students that we have there and their families, you know, for this generation and the generations to come. So thank you for all the hard work. And then did a tour of Washington Elementary School. You know, we're looking to reopen that school. We hired a great principal there. And the facility is in pretty good shape so far, so we really should have really fairly minimal expenses for updating the facilities. So I'm really excited that that school's been in good shape and that'll help us move that quickly. And then lastly, Leotada Floyd sponsored a family teacher meetings with their students, and they just had a really great turnout. It was an opportunity for the families to meet their teachers and to get questions answered and to, you know, kind of see how the students are interacting with their teachers. Very positive, and it really helps make everyone feel comfortable and more at home with that great school. So they're, they just keep doing really fun things to tie the community closer and closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hanson. Vice President, Bridget. Oh, before you start, for your Cal Middle School, Go Bears.
There's some friendly competitions going on up here. Speaking of which, the Rosemont Homecoming Parade was another successful event this year. We had the most students we've ever had participate. And there were just lines all the way from the Rosemont High School, all the way down to our elementary schools that were participating and the community events with that as well. And we're hoping that next year, we can still McClatchy's fire engine, because we hear they have a pretty fancy one. So they can steal our horses, we'll steal our fire engine. Last month, I had the privilege of attending the Council of Great City Schools Conference in Long Beach, along with the superintendent. And I attended three days of some pretty vigorous trainings. But I did just want to highlight that the, I think some of the best classes that I attended while I was there was co-presenting, our district was co-presenting with other districts. And our district was just really shining. And they did such a fabulous job, made me really realize, like, we've got some great things going on here. We have room to grow. We have some great things going on. I did want to thank the parents and our area superintendent, Olga, who came out to the three calendar change meetings that I've had. I've kept staff kind of busy out in my community, but we've had some great feedback. So I appreciate for everyone coming out and giving us their opinion. Last night, I attended the fall graduation along with the superintendent. And he's right, there was some great excitement happening there. And I did just want to mention that our very own Monroe Howard was the keynote speaker. And when he was speaking, and he actually brought some tears to my eyes, just being so truthful with his story of where he came from and where he is now was very touching. So I just want to thank him personally for being so honest with our students and showing them that there is a path for them. Lastly, for fun things, Rosemont High School is hosting a bingo spaghetti feed, and this benefits the Safe and Sober Grad Night. Prior to stepping onto the Board of Education, I helped Rosemont High School create a program for Safe and Sober Grad Night to keep our students safe and sound on graduation night. And this is one of their bigger fundraisers, so I invite all of my board colleagues. I know that Board Member Ryan attended with me last year, so I hope that she'll come out again with her family and hopefully some of my other board colleagues and you in the audience. That's going to happen on Friday, November 13th. And you can get more information from the Rosemont High School website. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Bridget. Member Cochran.
It was my pleasure to work with Member Ryan to celebrate David Lubin and reintroduce it to the neighborhood. It's going to be a wonderful STEAM school, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. I especially like to say thank you to the parents of David Lubin because they worked very hard to have a very successful event, and I think it's just one of many going forward. Briefly, I had the pleasure to go up to Portland, and I was on vacation for a few days, but I managed to visit a couple of schools in the school district. And then I also went to what was a former school that has been converted into a hotel. And it was an interesting place to visit because, I don't know if you know, but we have a property in Sac City on 28th and G Streets. It's Old Marshall School. It was established in the early 1900s, and its future right now is undetermined. I saw this school and I was quite amazed, and I see there are many possibilities with our building. And my colleague, Trustee Hanson, is working with Director Kathy Allen to make sure that it has a good future. So keep your eyes open because the proposals are coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10.1, first strategic, first draft strategic plan. Dr. Rogers.
As Dr. Rogers comes up to the podium, it's a, part of our goal was with the strategic plan to make sure that we keep everybody apprised of the progress. So he's going to be able to talk to us about a first draft already of the strategic plan, but then what we're continuing to do in terms of engaging our community and then timeline, because we are, our intent is to finish this up and have it ready for approval at the end of the school year. Dr. Rogers.
Hey. Well, good evening, Board President Wu, Board members, Superintendent Banda. I'm Al Rogers, Chief Strategy Officer, and as you said, here to brief the board on our first strategic plan draft. I also have with me Kathy Morrison and Will Drell. They've been working with us on this project. Willis from Pivot Learning Partners, and Kathy is our coordinator for strategic plan and for LCAP. So as a, let's see, here we go. Let's see if I can get this. I'm getting going with this. Turn it on, is that right? We're off to a great start here. Broke it, okay. Well. Okay, I was going to say, I think I can signal you. I believe you have hard copies. Okay. All right. Hey. Well, so tonight, we will make sure that we give the board some background on the project. We will present to you the elements of the first draft, which is really primarily an outline, right? It's not a complete copy of the strategic plan, but it does give you a good idea of the overall structure. We'll describe the efforts in community engagement that have occurred so far and what we're planning in terms of next steps for engagement and further design. So just for review, this project is to develop a strategic plan that will inform our work for the next five years. We're going to ensure that it aligns closely with our district's LCAP. And we'll make sure that while the big ideas of the strategic plan and the LCAP are aligned, that also the budget will align to those ideas. And I think that will help the district stay on track throughout that entire time. This project is designed in a series of phases, and we're moving right along. We have actually, of the five distinctive phases, we've completed the first two, which are Discover and Interpret, being the first phase where we produced a needs assessment. And now here we are, completing the ID-8 and prototype, which is the first draft or the outline of the strategic plan. Moving into the third phase, which is the first cycle of feedback and community engagement and enhancing the plan based on what we learned from the community. Quick review, our previous strategic plan from 2010 to 2014 really centered on three areas or goal areas, college and career-ready students, family and community engagement, and organizational transformation. With the LCAP, we carried those same goals forward with at least college and career-ready students, and also with safe, clean, healthy schools and family and community engagement. The strategic plan we're working on now has, of course, college and career-ready students, safe, healthy, engaging schools, family and community empowerment, and operational excellence as the primary drivers. We've put together a design team that represents several different stakeholder groups as well as experts in the field. These people have reviewed the needs assessment. We have brainstormed. We've reviewed plans from across the nation. We've studied data and conducted focus group interviews. And we've worked closely with cabinet members as our resident experts and the steering committee, which is comprised primarily of cabinet and the board, to create our first draft. The first draft is made up primarily of the mission. It reviews the mission, in fact, and sort of has affirmed that the board and cabinet still expect that students to graduate as globally competitive lifelong learners prepared to succeed in a career and higher education institution of their choice, to secure employment and contribute to society. So we found that it's still a good mission. And it appears we've got a new draft vision, which is every student is responsible, productive citizen in a diverse and competitive world. And there have been some core values that have bubbled up in conversation, which we'll discuss, as well as the goals that I've already presented to you. So first off, regarding this, the vision and the core goals, the core values, the piece on equity, as the superintendent mentioned earlier in the commentary, equity is clearly a central value. It drives our whole concept of excellence insofar as every student is expected to get what he or she needs in order to thrive. We'll look at how equity can drive and support achievement. We can reflect that equity and that commitment to equity with the integrity of our work. We expect as an organization to be held accountable for our work, and we expect to look for ways to do our work more efficiently and be better stewards of our resources as a part of our commitment to equity for all students. Under college and career-ready students, we have put together or synthesized the comments and what we've learned to summarize that as this notion that we're going to challenge and support all students to actively engage in rigorous and relevant curriculum that prepares them for college and career, regardless of zip code, race, or ethnicity, ability, language proficiency, and life circumstances. language proficiency, and life circumstances. So college and career-ready students can include actions such as improving and expanding the implementation of standards-based curriculum, expanding approaches to instruction. By that, to clarify, this could include language immersion, it could include work-based learning, expanded course options through advanced placement and college partnerships, dual enrollment, and expanded and improved use of instructional technology. We expect the recommendations will include action on expanding and improving interventions and academic supports for all students. We anticipate the provision of additional opportunities for high-quality learning, and there seems to be a very strong recommendation emerging for improving teacher and leader practice that could include building key structures for professional learning and collaboration among networks of teachers and leaders to support a specific student subgroup performance. Safe, healthy, and engaging schools is where we are seeing the strong recommendation that Sacramento City Unified School District will cultivate clean, healthy, safe, and inviting school environments that foster student engagement. Some of the activities or the action that has been recommended in this, or that we provide students and staff with culturally relevant social, emotional, and health supports, that we build and maintain safe and supportive school climates, and that we ensure safe, clean, and welcoming environments conducive to student learning. The next major goal that has emerged in our strategic plan is family and community empowerment. There are three primary actions that have been recommended so far, those being continue to build parent capacity for empowerment. This could include expanded classes for parents, support for participation in home visits, ensuring school site councils and site plans meet family engagement goals, and culturally competent communication to families with translation and accessible language. There's also a recommendation for action on supporting the wide range of needs of the various school communities. This could include, for example, parent resource centers at all of our school sites, training for staff on effective models of parent engagement, and expanded facilities availability. And then to foster, strengthen, and foster and otherwise strengthen community partnerships. The last of those recommendations so far are, is the goal of operational excellence. This is where the district will become, or continue to be, a service-focused organization, constantly and consistently serving students, families, staff, and community with efficient and effective programs. So some of the actions represented or that bubbled up in the, in the discussion and the review include a commitment to the highest standards of customer service. So this could include establishing district-wide standards for customer service, training staff accordingly, and developing a customer service measurement tool for each district department. Additionally, there's a recommendation for action on hiring, supporting, and retaining high-quality staff reflective of the diversity of our community. There's also an action, a recommendation to identify and improve systems and practices for all operations and business services. This could include a review of district systems and practices to establish standard operating procedures, training staff on those procedures, and identifying and addressing any inefficiencies. Lastly, there was a recommendation for action on implementing a robust data collecting and reporting process that reflects our commitment to operational excellence. So what happens next, especially for the next month, is a very active sharing and engagement of the community on the draft plan. So you'll see there that from November 9th to December 11th, we'll be really all over the district. We've got 50 public education volunteers who will be trained, will be at school site meetings, community meetings, will be utilizing newsletters, working with our labor partners, and so forth. The community meetings begin very shortly, the first being November 17th here at the CERNET Center. We're working to get meetings to happen in each of the board member areas, and it's important to note that we are offering childcare and translation will be provided for families so that we can have full participation. You may remember this slide from before. We wanted to just take a quick moment to remind the board and the superintendent, we are taking steps to ensure throughout the process, the strategic plan and the LCAP are being developed alongside each other. And as much as possible, those meetings we're having with the community are serving both purposes. Notice the process also lists issues like the governor's first budget, will inform the process, as will the mayor revise, so that by the time the board actually has a final copy of the strategic plan and of the LCAP, you will have seen robust engagement throughout the year. So a different look at the timeline shows the PEV training happening right away, and we begin immediately with the Cycle 1 feedback on the strategic plan. There'll be a, a period of data analysis and revisions to the draft. When we say revisions, it becomes more than an outline. We're actually filling in the details of those action recommendations. We'll go back out to the community in the spring, asking for further refinement, further feedback from the community, and then finally, we'll be back to you in June with a final strategic plan. Are there questions?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Member Cochran.
So, Dr. Rogers, I think you know that I have a lot of questions, so I just wanted to ask you, first of all, well, a statement, I think, I think we're like-minded in that when you make a plan, it's very important to be specific. And I know that you're in the beginning stages, and totally understand that and not expecting great specificity, but I want to know how you're going to go forward and name specific things in the plan that will be accomplished as opposed to leaving it as a philosophical document.
Well, you know, as you mentioned, at this stage in the game, it's, I wouldn't say it's quite philosophical, but you're right, the, the goals are very broad, and we're, we're looking for traction with the community about what matters most, right? So trying to reflect the community's values and understand, based on the needs assessment, where is the richest ground for improvement. As we go through this process, and also as we see the, the governor's budget comes out, we'll be able to add detail, right? So we'll be able to, to run these ideas by the community, we'll be able to continually work with our experts, mostly our cabinet members, and as we proceed through those, those processes, we'll be able to sort of add details as well as a timeline on what we can actually fund and what we have the knowledge and expertise to, to execute.
I can add to that, too, Board Member Cochran. So when we arrive at the, at the bigger goals, we'll be able to develop the sub-goals of, with it have more specificity to how we're going to do that work. And then the last phase will be developing the metrics of how you're going to measure accomplishing those things. So right now, it is a broader document, but in the process, you'll be distilling it down to sub-goals, more specificity, and then the metrics for how we're going to measure and hold ourselves accountable to accomplishing those things.
Well, thank you for interjecting there. I'm not sure who to direct these questions to, so if you want to jump in, feel free. So I understand development of sub-goals as a term, and I understand the development of metrics as a term. Give me a specific example. Not that it would actually happen, but something that could be a sub-goal. How, how is it defined? Is it very specific? Is it a specific program? Is it developing teachers, recruitment? What, what are we talking about here?
So one of the big themes of this work is, is having students become college and career-ready. And as a, as a concept, that really is, is a big deal nationwide, and we'll actually hear more about that in the data discussion. Now, we're learning about college and career readiness, understanding things like how do, do the A through G college entrance eligibility criteria function relative to college readiness? And we know that eligibility does not necessarily equal readiness, but it's a key piece, and our graduation requirements do not equal or are not aligned to A through G. So there's going to be an ongoing evaluation and discussion. Should we maybe include in the strategic plan an alignment of the graduation requirements to A through G? Right now, that is a philosophical discussion, as you said, and through that ongoing dialogue with the community and detailed study, we may come back with a recommendation, the strategic plan, as well as steps to achieve that particular change or enhancement to what we do.
I can only speak for myself, but I would guess that I probably have like-minded colleagues on the board, and that is that I, I don't want to look at a document that's fuzzy. I want to look at a document, and this is no reflection on your work to date, because I know exactly how hard you and your team are working, but when it comes time for us to vote on it or to provide a specific input or critique, I'm not voting for fuzzy, and I, and I will speak to fuzziness. So are you going to take us there specifically with ideas and programs?
Yes, ma'am, and in fact, we'll all go there together. By the time we come back to you in the spring with the final document, I'm, I'm sure the whole city will have had a chance to weigh in on, on it, and, and we'll make sure that we're actually presenting you a feasible plan.
You know, I'm not trying to waste this body's time or this audience's time, but so often when we get strategic plans, they are beautiful and they're on paper, but as we move forward, we wind down the road and we lose our path, and they never really give specific direction. I am counting on you with your extreme abilities and your team's abilities to give us a pathway to get things done. Thank you. So one of the things that has bothered me a little bit so far in this process, and again, it's not a reflection on you because you are doing a great job as directed, but as a board member, and I looked at your slides, I realized that the board's input doesn't come until farther down the line, where we look at, I believe maybe it's the next phase of what you present to us and provide feedback. Everybody in this community, parents, teachers, people who are on the LCAP community, and this Board of Education should be giving ideas directly into this plan. We should not be sidelined as final people to stamp an approval or to voice disapproval. Now is the time to bring us in. How can you do that?
Well, first of all, I couldn't agree more. In the, in the, the structure of the, the process, there is a steering committee, first of all, that we should be working to inform you all, all along the way. The steering committee is comprised of the board and of the superintendent's cabinet. So whether it be through one-to-ones between myself and the individual board members or the superintendent with individual board members, or in the, the actual steering committee meetings that will happen, I think continually every other week, that should be one way that we can keep the board informed and not sidelined. Additionally, though, the community meetings are meant to be a way for board members to be directly involved. We're having those in every, every one of the, the board members' areas, actually at least one, and looking to hopefully have you present and a chance to directly communicate with the participants in those meetings.
So when, I'm not clear about the steering committee. Is this something that's in place now or it's coming, or?
We probably should have had a formal ceremony for the designation of the steering committee, but I mentioned in, in some presentations before and probably didn't spend enough time on it, but that maybe informally, all of the board members are included on the steering committee along with the members of cabinet.
So is there a date set for these steering committees, or is it just a, a committee that I don't know about and I should know, or?
Probably not a standing committee in the formal sense that you're thinking right now, but more of just gathering them whenever possible and ensuring that they are informed. So what we can do, though, is we can make sure that we are a little bit more formal in our communication about meeting with board members and cabinet members and updating or informing about whatever has changed with the plan.
You know, I know that there are problems because of the Brown Act and meeting and so forth, but there are ways to hold a meeting, and I'm sure you can talk to the attorney that works for the district to find out how we can meet as a body to give specific input, and I am formally requesting that. I do not want to be left out of this process. I want to represent my constituents and stand up for the children of Sac City, and I don't want to have to come and look at a program and start bickering about what's in there or out there. I think every single one of us deserves a voice on what happens before this plan gets formalized. So this is a specific request to have you form that committee or a retreat or whatever you have to do to bring us into the process now.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So one of the things that I really want you to look at, and I know this is not the time to be so specific, but we cripple ourselves in this district by not recruiting and hiring excellent educators to be ready on day one to hit the ground and teach our students. It was pointed out by Ms. Guion, I believe, two board meetings ago, that we started a school year with, I believe, more than 80 empty positions and several subs who were already in place. This is unacceptable, and it has to be on the top, top of the chart for what we need to do. So, you know, I'm looking out here at Ms. Sutherland and Special Ed, and I know you have all these things on your list, and I'm not going to start picking away at them now, but my primary concern tonight is I don't want to be left out of this process. I want in right now, and I would like any board member who's going to speak after me to echo that comment if they believe so. Thank you, thank your team so very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Ma'am, thank you.
Before I call Member Ryan, I did neglect to call public comments, so I'd like to call them now.
President Wu, we have two comments on this item from Darlene Anderson and Angie Sutherland.
I'd like to say, serving as the former DAC chair, that it really is important, the parents' voice, and how parents participate in the schools. And I, and I have a Facebook page called Public Education is a Local Issue: Will it be jobs or prison for African-American children? Because it really is that. And when we look at the African-American community, and I understand what happened with Prop 209 and the integration equity thing, it really has affected our local public schools, because it affects them and contractors and services, it affects them in having to look at the equity issue about the failing African-American kids, and now it's just, it's worse than ever. And I would, and I would just like to say that when you get put in Special Ed in the SDC class, you're not exactly on a high school diploma track, and a lot of parents don't know that. And so they're in there, and they're not going to graduate. It's not expected for them to graduate. And then how, it's not, it's not just Mrs. Bryant's problem, it's the district's problem, because it's how Special Ed is included in the Single Plan for Student Achievement, how those services are lined at the site, and, and who's going to be held accountable? Because it's not there, it's not listed, and, you know, I probably wouldn't be pushing this issue so much, but I know it's impossible to have an effective voice in this district because people just ignore you. And, and I don't think ignoring the community is, is something that's positive, because I think it causes our community to have a lot of problems. And I would like to say that, you know, we really, we wanted the promise of money, and I said, everybody got, and congratulations, boom, boom, promise of, okay, so what's going to happen with the African-American students and the African-American community? There's really no input because we don't have a way to address those folks because Prop 209 is not going to let them. And quite frankly, that's taxation. And quite frankly, that's taxation without representation, because those people pay taxes too, and they have a right to benefit from the public services. And I think it's important for us to change our minds about how we think, to move on to ensuring that we create a community that has access for all people. And it's just important. I'm tired. I thank you guys for tolerating me. Know that I'm going to still come here and talk about the importance of educating all children and having the program that really works, because, believe me, special ed is great. My son is above proficient, and we still have challenges in the classroom, simply because he is disabled. He does have a disability. And it's difficult, the way the system works now, for teachers to address them, because they have this master teacher thing going on. And I'm telling you, I don't know what master teacher is. I know what a, a program specialist is, I know what a resource specialist is, and I know that that's how he got to where he was. From severely miller retarded to far below, far below basic to above proficient in the years that he's been here, from repeating the second grade to, to now. And I just think that I know it's possible, and I think we should strive for all students to have that same opportunity. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Ms. Anderson, could you come up for just a second, please? I would just like to tell you that since I've been here, which is coming on a year now, I do listen to you when you come up, and I take to heart what you say, and I try to work on your issues. We're not perfect, but I want to personally thank you for coming up here almost every board meeting to speak your mind and speak for others.
Thank you. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi, everyone. I'm Angie Sutherland. I'm a parent. I have a daughter at Hollywood Park Elementary. And I have to say that I agree with Mrs. Anderson, and it, it's not just a special education thing. It's, it's an entire community culture and climate and our schools. It's, it's too siloed right now, and it needs to be more inclusive and more everyone working together and coming up with creative solutions. And so as far as the strategic plan, what my questions were is about the demographic of the design team. I don't, I don't really know who's on the design team or what that is, but it really needs to make sure that it's a diverse team in how the input is gathered and also how it's synthesized. What, I, I see the list of example services. I don't want those to be too leading into the data collection process. I've been on other district initiative meetings similar to the strategic plan, and they have been a little bit leading with providing, already providing examples of, of services. So I also really do want to see specifics. So I'm hoping that if the plan is developed, that every single unit in our district and every single school and teacher, individuals, have a plan for themselves on how they're going to align to the strategic plan, and what those steps are going to be, and that those are measured and that they are transparent and shared with everyone. Or it's not going to work, it's just going to be a plan on a piece of paper. So I will be looking and monitoring and measuring. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sutherland. Member Ryan.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. So I echo many of the comments of my board colleague, Member Cochran, and our two public comments that we just received. You know, I, I guess I would say, Al, in my opinion, I think that this strategic plan is one of the most important things the district can be doing. And I would charge you and the Sacramento City Unified School District team to come up with some hairy audacious goals, because frankly, I don't think we should aim for, you know, continuing what we've done when we can be doing significantly better work, I know, on behalf of students and acting with a more urgent focus on closing achievement gaps, on increasing preparation. There's so many of the things that we've talked about tonight. I appreciate the fact that the team heard my feedback. I was very concerned, because we have been soliciting applications for our LCAP Parent Advisory Committee with no connection to the strategic plan. And I heard from community members that had they understood that they would also be charged with providing input and shaping the strategic plan, there might have been more interest in applying. And so hearing that feedback, the district was willing to reopen the application process. We delayed our appointment for another board meeting, which I think was absolutely wise and necessary. I will also say, I think that the timing is interesting, because we have a challenge, and the challenge before us is we are sitting on a stale strategic plan. And I think that that speaks volumes when you're trying to move the needle on student achievement. I think that the board member Cochran's comments about ensuring that we are actually putting forth metrics with clear goals that we can measure and hold accountable for progress is extremely important. And I actually, when I talk about, let's have these hairy audacious goals, think that then they need to come alongside metrics and strategy for achieving results, right? And so, you know, for instance, if we're talking about expanding approaches to instruction or improving standard-based curriculum, you know, with a focus on college and career readiness, once again, I think we need to reach for the stars. And when I see school districts across the state that are adopting A through G as a default curriculum, I think that that is what Sacramento City Unified School District should be doing and should be doing at post-haste. Frankly, you know, I think when we talk to most of our families in the district, they don't know what A through G is. What they know is they want their children to be college and career ready. Quite often, they just trust that we, as their educators and servants, are putting them on that track. And you can imagine their dismay when they find out that they actually are not for-year-college eligible. So I think this idea that we provide all students with equitable opportunity to be put on an A through G path with alignment to high school graduation requirements or an expectation that they would have to opt out versus opting in is extremely important and frankly, consistent with more ambitious school districts across the state. I also would say, as we're articulating goals for expanding early childhood education, I want to see some very clear, and once again, and, and, you know, I will say this over and over again, ambitious language and metrics that say improving early childhood education. And what does that look like? Is that preschool for all? Is that ensuring TK for all? I want to hear that is our goal. And then if that's alongside A through G as a default curriculum, we can have a phase in over the next few years to get to that vision. But frankly, if we're not reaching for that, we're doing our students and our families a disservice. I would say beyond that, as we're talking about providing a healthy and engaging school environment and empowering our families and doing this with a commitment to operational excellence, this should come with a clear focus on closing persistent achievement gaps. And so what I want to see is, you presented at the last meeting, that we've done better in graduation, in terms of all graduation rates, but we're still doing an abysmal job for African-American students being suspended from the school district. I want to see some very clear and once again, ambitious goals that we either eliminate those achievement gaps and eliminate the disparities, or reduce suspension by 20%, 30%, whatever we deem to be a remarkable and significant goal that benefits our students. And so I know that that will be the next stage of the work, but frankly, I think that we have to be having these conversations right now. Back to what Ms. Guian said earlier, and actually last board meeting comments about having to provide 80 emergency certifications to teachers, that keeps me up at night. It keeps me up at night, because I know that it most impacts our poor students, our poor communities, and our students who probably don't have all of the other enrichment that allow them to be put on a path to success. And so once again, as we reach for these hairy audacious goals, I'd like to say, let's reduce that emergency certification of teachers by half or 75%. And here are the strategies for doing that, that reach down into SAC State and others to recruit the best and the brightest, may be aligned with a reimagining of our school calendar so that we can make that work. And then I guess, just my last comment here, is I think we have a wealth of institutional knowledge on our cabinet, people who in their issue areas are among the best and the brightest. And I frankly, as we're going to the community or talking about a steering committee, want to know what their big goals are. If they were able to throw out ideas that they thought would change the dynamic of student achievement in the district, would significantly improve outcomes for all students, irrespective of their zip code, what would that look like? And what does that look like by department? And how do we then translate that into measurable goals that they commit to being held accountable because it's the right thing to do for our students? And then let's talk about how we move that forward with a detailed plan.
Thank you, Member Ryan. Member Rodriguez?
Thank you, President Wu. Look, I'm okay with, I'm okay with this document being fuzzy right now. I understand the process. I understand what you're trying to do here. Okay? But I do say this, that I am support of Member Cochran, and when she says she won't support anything fuzzy, I won't either. Okay? I'm very concerned, because you say you have one-on-one meetings with board members and you have this steering committee. I echo what Member Cochran says, because I heard about a steering committee, haven't heard anything since. You and I had a one-on-one scheduled, you canceled it and said, there's no need to, to reschedule. So if there's no need to reschedule, then what one-on-ones are you having and with whom? Because it's not happening with me. Those are my concerns. Okay? And I, I, they're very big ones. Community outreach is another big one for me. And before I go on with what I say, what I'm about to say about this, I just need to gain an understanding from you of, do you know the demographics of our district? And if so, please state them. Ethnic demographics.
I'm sorry, you, you want the, you want the ethnic breakdown of the students in our district?
Yes.
I don't have those numbers exactly in front of me.
Our estimate.
Sorry?
A rough estimate is fine.
I'd say we have probably in the, in the twenties, the major ethnic groups, African-American, we have about 23%. We, for Hispanic students, we have, I would say, probably around 30%. Asian, and I don't mean to group all Asian students together, but under that group, we probably have in the neighborhood of, it's in the twenties. And, and I could continue there, but it's all, it's a guess. I just don't have those numbers in front of me. And then if we were thinking about free and reduced lunch or English language learners, you know, I could make some guestimates there too, but I wouldn't want to be inaccurate at this, at this podium here.
It's, it's interesting, and, and I just think that it's interesting. I mean, us as board members, on any given day, we, we have to know our demographics of the district. That's plain and simple. We have to know. I can be in front of a, a body of individuals, professional or parents, and I have to know what those demographics are. Okay? You should know that developing a strategic plan, it should be kind of bred into you now. Because I say this, because if you don't know what our district looks like, you can't plan for that district. Okay? We have 38%, which is our largest population of students in our district, Latino. 17% Asian. 17% African-American. You see how far off base you were just by looking around, right? And just by some of the focus that, of the conversations that happen. We think that this group probably represents more than this group. But if we're failing to focus on some of our larger groups, and we're failing to plan for them. And this whole idea about A through G requirements, and how we're having this philosophical discussion, and the reason why I asked you about ethnic breakdown, is because some of these cultures, ethnically, will never question the district about what type of education their children are receiving when they send them off to school. A Mexican national is not going to question authority when they send their child off to school. They trust that when they send their child to school, that that child is going to be given every single tool that they need to succeed at the end of their school years, when they graduate. They don't, they're not going to understand A through G requirements. Same goes with any other ethnic group that is presented in our district. If they come from another country, or their ancestors more recently come from another country, they were raised with that idea. That's why it's important to know what we are made up of. If we have 44 different languages that are spoken within our district, that means we have a lot of families that are more likely first generations here. We have to pay attention to that. Okay?
In the 40 years that I've been associated with the district, having attended Susan B. Anthony, Edward Kimball, John Still Sacramento High School, and then after that, and having all three of my children come through this system, and then serving as a principal at a number of the schools, the demographics sometimes change. And I will keep in mind your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. You're district-level staff now, and that's how we operate. We can't ignore our communities when we do our outreach. I know that there are certain communities that certain board members have, that it's really hard to get the people to come out and engage. But we can't ignore them. They need to be part of this process. And you're not going to hear me give up on how we need to strategically get out into those communities and how we need to touch them and bring them in. And if you're not including those board members in your conversation, then we're not going to be successful. Those are all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. And I have no more comments. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I look forward to the next.
I'm sorry, my light's back on. So talking about specificity, can we meet in the manner that I requested, looking towards Brown Act and how to do it before winter break?
I'm sure we can.
No, I'm not sure. Can we? Will you make that happen?
Yes, we can.
Dr. Rogers, you, you are not a human pincushion, and I appreciate you coming up here and doing this work.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Moving on to item 10.2, Annual Review of Academic Achievement. Dr. Rogers, come on back.
So before Dr. Rogers begins, some of the comments made by board members, you know, talking about focusing on opportunity gaps, achievement gaps. So this next presentation is really to start to highlight the data. And the idea is to put the data out there. It is what it is, and it's going to inform us as we go forward, so that when we focus on certain gaps in our, in, in our students' progress, we're able to pinpoint where the gaps are and then be able to not only identify that, but be able to then come up with targeted interventions and then be able to monitor it and make sure that our students experience progress as they move forward. So the overview of materials coming up next is pretty detailed, and I know it'll be a lot of material for everyone to digest, but know that this is also going to be something that we'll continue to bring up on a regular basis with our board and our community, because we do want to hold ourselves accountable to making sure that our students experience successful outcomes and while coming, while going through our school system here in SAC
Okay, well, good evening again. I'm Al Rogers, Chief Strategy Officer, and here to work with us this evening on the Annual Review of Academic Achievement is Ms. Robin Martin, the district's Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation. It's our intent this evening to brief the board
It's our intent this evening to brief the board and the superintendent on the progress our students are making and to review also the district's approach to measuring student learning as well as our overarching expectations. As a result of this briefing, the board should be in a position, I think, to continue in its leadership and support of student learning. So, beginning with this notion of college and career readiness as we approach the data, it's important to point out that it's widely held throughout America that we need to make sure that our students are prepared to compete in a world that demands more than just basic skills. We're finding that about a third of our nation's high school graduates are entering college with some need for remediation. We're also finding that our projected workforce demands are exceeding the numbers of students who are actually going into college. And we're finding that America is ranking 12th in college completion rates, whereas we used to be first among developed countries. This issue of college and career readiness has kind of become a powerful driver for school reform throughout the United States. And what this means is that our standards, our coursework and assessment intervention systems, they have to take into account this whole notion of college and career readiness as opposed to just proficiency in core subjects. So what you have tonight is results on performance indicators that kind of go across a range of ways to look at student performance. And it may, in fact, be the first time that we've actually tracked student performance and presented that to the board in these ways. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Director Martin. She'll walk you through a series of results on those performance indicators, and then I'll take the mic back and offer some summary comments and some ideas on how we're approaching use of this information as we move ahead.
Good evening, Superintendent Bonda, President Wu, members of the board. I'm going to walk you through a technical conversation around the data and be available for you for that. You've talked about a lot of these data already this evening in the context around the data in our strategic plan, in our state priorities, in our LCAP. And our focus here on the college and career readiness indicators are just a smaller subset of that larger accountability framework. And it'll be important to keep that in mind as the larger state priority of student achievement is broader. It's multiple measure. It entails basic services, conditions for learning, culture, climate, but we're focusing on just that small subset tonight. And when we look at the data, it's important to remember that's couched in the policy context of college and career readiness, getting students to graduation, and really looking at access and opportunity. So when we look at data, it'll be important for us to consider that priority of student achievement and think about whether or not the evidence exists that those conditions are there. And the first slide will review our CASP results, specifically our S-Back, ELA, and math results. And the board members have received these data already in a board communication. They've been publicly available. We won't spend too much time on them, but just a quick overview and looking at the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding standards overall, 35% of our students are exceeding the standards in English Language Arts and 29% of our students are meeting or exceeding standards in mathematics. And there are new, there are a new step, a series of achievement level indicators. There are four, from standards not met to standards exceeded. You're familiar with these data layout also. This is looking at the four levels of overall performance by grade level. And this is representing our mathematics performance. The dark green bars on the bottom represent exceeds, the percentage of students who exceeded standards, followed by a stat, and at the next stacked bar of students that met standards, up to nearly met and not met. And when you look at the right-hand side of the continuum, the grade 11 students, the grade 11 exam serves as an indicator of college readiness for the Early Assessment Program. And 9% of our students are representing college readiness as demonstrated by the grade 11 S-Back. And with math, we don't really see any clear patterns or trends yet, so that's something to consider in terms of our starting point. And math, I think, represents our largest shift overall as we move into the Common Core. And as we look at these data, it's always important that we are looking at these data in other contexts, other indicators that we have about where and when and how students are demonstrating the knowledge, skills, and processes as required by the Common Core standards. And in English Language Arts, when we look at performance across the grade levels, we see more of a trend, more of a pattern. We see that as students matriculate through the grade levels and as the content and rigor does increase, we see that students are meeting the standards. We have a greater number of students who are either meeting or exceeding standards across the grade levels in ELA. And we have 70% of our students who are college-ready as determined by the grade 11 ELA for Early Assessment Program. And just one more cut. The S-Back data is looking at that subset of students who are meeting or exceeding standards. On the left-hand side is English Language Arts, and on the right is mathematics performance. And if we look at the data, we can see that our white students are performing at a much higher rate in terms of performance on the S-Back and demonstration of Common Core knowledge and skill mastery and attainment. Some of the gaps are large. If we look at the difference in performance between our white students and our Hispanic subgroup, the difference is about 28%. And when we look at, in English Language Arts, and when we look at the difference between our white subgroup and our African-American subgroup, we see that the difference is much larger, at 35%. And in terms of looking at the work ahead of us, those are going to be important gaps to watch and looking at ways that we're effectively looking at the strategies available to us in instruction and closing those gaps. And the gaps are pretty similar. When we look at math, we see a 33% gap between our African-American student and our white subgroup in mathematics performance, and a 27% gap between our Hispanic and white subgroup in mathematics performance. The S-Back also offers us a smaller level of detail from the overall score. There are three levels of performance for the claim scores. The ELA and the math are broken out into specific claim areas. There are four claims in English Language Arts and three in math. And students will be, students will, the indicator for students being proficient in those various claim levels are measured by being below standard, at or near standard, or above standard. And if we look at the percentage of students who are at or near standard or above standard, we see that over 60% of our students are at or above standard in our ELA claim performance indicators. And about 50% of our students are at or above or near standard in our mathematics claim areas. And we do see that the larger percent of our students are performing rather well in the communicating and reasoning claim for mathematics. And I think that represents a lot of the work in math and the large shift towards demonstrating a conceptual understanding of fluency through articulating and understanding and explaining and justifying work. And the next indicator that we have available to us to look at our student outcomes and student achievement is our AP indicator. And we landed on an ever-enrolled measure to look at how students are performing in AP. So this represents a cohort view. So this represents a three-year cohort trend, 2013, 14, and 15. And if we look at our graph, on the left is for SUSD, we had 29% of our students were ever enrolled in AP in 2013. And in 2014, 31% of that cohort were ever enrolled in AP, which means that they took an AP class at least once during their high school year. And in 2015, 30% of our students had ever taken a course in AP. And this is an unduplicated count, so certainly we do have students represented in these data that maybe took a full suite or program or sequence of AP, or maybe students who just took one, but it represents students who had access to any AP during their cohort year. And I provided a couple ways to look at this. One is just to look at change. So if we look at, if we look at an increase in students who ever had taken an AP from 2013 to 2015, we see very moderate increases in that effort, a 1% increase from 2013 to 2015. And we could see that aside from our smaller subgroups that have lower ends, we see larger fluctuations, but the majority of our subgroups did show some increase in having access to AP. There was just a small decline with our Hispanic subgroup and going down by 1% from 2013 to 2015. And another way to look at the data is just to look at the average gap again between the white subgroup and, for instance, our students who are black and brown in color, African-American students and our Hispanic students. We see that the gap between our white subgroup and our African-American students is fairly large, at 29%. And the gap between our white subgroup and our Hispanic subgroup in terms of ever being enrolled in AP is about 17%. There's a 17% difference. And when we look at the data, we think about access and opportunity. The opportunity to take AP is an opportunity to engage in challenge and rigoring and stimulating coursework. And when we think about what these data tell us, we just need to think whether or not that evidence exists in us meeting that goal for all students. And when we look at the data and the remaining slides, just some questions to ask are just, what do we notice with the data? Do we see any gaps? And are there any trends? And are the data consistent with our expectations? And this is the standard view, the way we look at data. This just tells us what percent of our grade 12 cohort were represented in AP. Another way to look at data, so when we look at this, for instance, we could say that 14% of our 2015 grade 12 African-American students were ever enrolled in AP. Another way we could look at the same data, if we just stick with that 2015 cohort. And we had a discussion about the demographics of our population. If we look at the African-American population at the top, they represent about 18% of our population. And if we look, and if we think about ever AP being the pie that we're looking at, so for that 2015 cohort, the percentage of students who were ever in AP, the African-Americans only represented 9% of those grade 12 students who were in AP. So what statements we can make about that data, for instance, is that the percentage of African-American students who have ever taken AP is disproportionate to the percent of African-Americans in the population. So in the first slide, we just looked at the cohort, the grade 12 cohort, and the distribution of AP among the grade 12 cohort. And this just gives us a different view to look at of that grade 12 AP population, what percent of the population were represented by African-American, Hispanic, Asian, white, et cetera. And the next slide is looking at the distribution of AP scores. Any student who scored a 3+ on one or more exams, it's an unduplicated count. And again, it's looking at three cohorts of students from 2013 to 2015. And we do see a positive change in the percent of students who are scoring 3+ at the district level overall from 2013 to 2015. We had a 4% increase in students who are scoring 3+. And we saw the largest subgroup with our socially economically disadvantaged subgroup increasing by 11% from 2013 to 2015. And we see still, if we look at the bottom of the slide, we still see that fairly large gap among our white student subgroup and our African-American and Hispanic subgroup with still fairly large differences. In our graduation rates, we've had some conversation around this this evening. This is, again, a cohort look, a cohort graduation outcome from 2012 to 2013, or 2014. And overall, we see a 5% increase. We did kind of plateau from 2013 to 2014, but from 2012 to 2014, we had a 5% increase. And we saw a large increase in some of our smaller subgroups, 8% for Pacific Islanders and 4% for Filipino and 14% for American Indian. And when we look at the gap again, we see the gap is somewhat smaller because we do see our African-American students and our Hispanic students making gains and improving in their graduation rates. But we also have our reference group, our white subgroup population is also making gains. So the gap is still there even though we have all subgroups making gains. And A through G completion. Again, we had some conversation around that this evening, and we're sort of stagnant in terms of the percentage of our students who are completing A through G. We do know that students do go to college without completing A through G completion, but the large, well, the consistent expectation is that students do have access and opportunity to A through G preparatory courses. And we do see that some of the smaller subgroups are making gains. We have the highest gain from 12 to 214 with our Filipino subgroup, with 12% more students meeting the A through G requirement. And if we look at the gap again, we still see that it's smaller, but there is still a gap between our Hispanic and our African-American subgroup performance in meeting A through G in our white subgroup. And performance on college-ready benchmarks. We've had some conversation, and mostly we've always looked at the EAP in terms of students demonstrating readiness for college-bearing college classes. And one of our consistent indicators that we do look at over time is performance on the SAT and ACT. And they now have, over the past couple of years, retooled their results. That gives us a measure of college readiness. So students, for instance, who attain a composite SAT score of 1550 have a 50% probability of receiving a B or higher in their first year in college. And for the ACT, their measure of college readiness is really looking at students who achieve a minimum score on the various composites between the English, the science, the social science, and the math exams, looking at that minimum score. If students meet that minimum score, they have a 50% probability of achieving a B or better in their college-bearing courses. So those are some other indicators that we could look at in terms of determining readiness for college. And if we look at the data on these readiness benchmarks, we see that the majority of our kids do demonstrate readiness on the SAT, followed by the ACT, and then the EAP for English and Math in that order pretty consistently across subgroups. But again, we still have those gaps in performance and kids showing readiness. And finally, the last few slides, looking at outcomes, post-secondary outcomes. We have, this represents a seven-year average for seven cohorts. So on average, we have 66% of our students who do enter college the fall following high school graduation. And if we look at the cohort of 214, 66% of students attended any institution in the fall. And we see that the majority of our students do attend our public universities, with 62% of that cohort, for instance, attending a public university. And among the public universities, the majority of our students do attend the two-year universities. 37% of them attend the two-year university and 29% attend a four-year public university. Another important indicator when we look at college outcomes is persistence and looking at students who persist from the freshman to the sophomore year. And overall, this looks pretty positive. If we look at the first data point, there are two cohorts presented here, the 2012 cohort and the 2013 cohort in green. So if we look at the district average, we can see that for the 2012 cohort, 63% 63% of students enter college in the fall following high school graduation. And we see that 77% of that group persist to their sophomore year. And we see similar trends for the next cohort in 213, and that 66% of them do enter college the fall following their fresh, their grad, their high school graduation with 77% of that group persisting in their sophomore year. And overall, if we look at the most recent cohort that we do have data for, we have about 28% of our students who do attain a degree in six years. And the average for the, the three cohorts that we do have outcome data for, there are about 24% of students who do obtain a degree. And the last slide just summarizes the trends that, that we just looked at. We see, we do see some growth in, in our AP, in our, in our graduation rates. And on average, 70% of our students do persist from freshman to, from the freshman year to the sophomore year in college with 24% of our students graduating within four to six years. And Al, I'll let you close.
So thank you, Director Martin. So you can see with, with the data trends we were able to present to you this evening, Sacramento's participating with the nation to improve and to understand how and how well we are preparing students for college and career readiness. There are at least four promising strategies that will inform our work as we move ahead and, and creating solutions for things like strategic plan and, and others. We're looking at ways to create accelerated learning opportunities. We've seen that has worked well across the country via highly rigorous coursework, including AP and IB and Common Core standards for all subjects, as well as a discussion on college readiness graduation. We also know that active intervention programs are proving effective, providing timely and targeted interventions for students as they need it throughout their school career. We're, we're learning that this notion of college and career readiness advising actually needs to start very early. And we're seeing that work well throughout the country. And we also know that tracking and responding to and supporting post-secondary college persistence for degree completion, including a bridge programming and other student support and intervention programs, are part of what the school districts tend to need to get into and partner with college institutions for their students to succeed. So these are all part of how we're responding to the data trend that you saw today. And hopefully, those kinds of things will, will show up in our strategic plan and our ongoing dialogue. Are there questions?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. And before, before we get to questions from, from my colleagues, I think we have some public comment.
Yes, President Wu, we have one comment on this item from Liz Guian.
Good evening. I'm Liz Guian with Public Advocates. This is great. This is really amazing data. And I, because I don't know the history of the, the district's collection or reporting of it, this is the first time I've ever seen subgroup data like this drilled down, presented to the board. I think it's long, long overdue. And in fact, it's exactly the kind of information that the Local Control Accountability Plan Parent Advisory Committee had asked for and that the community two years ago had asked for as a way to say, as a way to gauge whether or not what was being proposed was really going to work and what the needs are. I would say that, that it is just a start, if it is a start. I mean, if you've been doing this all along and we just haven't seen it, then we need to continue, but we need to drill down further. And we need to get this information by grade level and schools so that we can really focus as the LCAP encourages us to do. The other thing I would like to point out is that foster youth need to be reported on more of the indicators and that with our new, with them being a new subgroup under LCFF, their minimum number per subgroup is lower than the other subgroups. It's 15. So we need to be identifying them on all these measures. The last thing I would say is that in terms of indicators, most of these indicators for college, all of these indicators for college readiness are opportunities and conditions that students receive in high school. And there are indicators that we need to be tracking much, much earlier than that. For example, grade level reading and writing, access to higher-level math courses in middle school. And I think those things would be very, very useful. So congratulations on this. And I'm just so excited to have the information, as depressing as it is. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Guian. Member Ryan.
Thank you. So I concur with Ms. Guian's comments. I have been hungry for this data for the past 10 months that I've been on the board. This is very near and dear to my heart, and this is very much of the work that I do in my day job. And frankly, I will tell you, as I look at this data, it's sobering. And it underscores to me systemic issues that need to be addressed, but some real challenges and trends that I hope that we're taking note of. You know, first of all, I think if you look at the graduation rates as they span across ethnic populations in Sacramento City Unified, we're listing at about 67% to 80% of our students graduating from high school. How are those students counted? Are those students who have entered a high school day one as freshmen that are counted through till the end? Okay. So 67% to 80%, depending on the color of your skin. Then if you go into those that are actually after high school graduation enrolling, and I am assuming you're counting both two- and four-year colleges. Colleges being defined as both community college and four-year colleges? Okay. So then, from there, we see those that are actually enrolling in two- and four-year colleges. And we have about 67% that are directly enrolling from high school in two- or four-year colleges. Then from that, we have 24% that are graduating within six years. I'm repeating back these data points because I want to illustrate something here. There are multiple exit points where we're losing students along the way. And if the final data point is that we're graduating 24% of the remaining students who have by luck and hard work persevered within six years, that's unacceptable. And I think we need to be addressing change beginning at kindergarten to buck that troubling trend. I know that I've been pushing the district and talking with leaders within the community, both in education sectors, higher ed, business, to talk about how can we launch a Sacramento College Promise? Because I think as we talk about these inequities across ethnic populations, we know that it begins with high-quality, early childhood education, so access that is equitable across the district. And that it also really relies upon having a strong kindergarten-to-college pipeline versus a kindergarten-to-prison pipeline for students who are black and brown. And so this idea of introducing a college promise that is very intentional in making sure that at key points, kindergarten, sixth grade, eighth grade, 10th grade, we're assessing whether or not students are in fact reading at grade level, are in fact algebra-prepared, are continuing on and taking A through G coursework, is critical. And I think a Sacramento Promise helps us do that and make a connection to life after high school. I would just say one other thing. I'm really concerned and I'm interested in hearing about how, if at all, the district is looking at addressing this idea that based on the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, we are now going to be testing third grade and beyond. I will tell you, I find that terribly troubling because as we know, when we're determining prison beds by the number of students who are reading at third grade level, what I ask is, are we missing a huge opportunity in not evaluating data for kindergarten readiness, for first-grade academic achievement, for second-grade academic achievement? What do we do in these first three critical years before we've got to the third grade, do or die?
Well, that's a big question. And I, I don't think I have a complete answer on all of our interventions. I know that there's been extensive work on the profile of the high school graduate. And that work includes, we're framing ways to create interventions and supports throughout the student's career. Now, I don't know that that has, has reached all the way to kindergarten, but we have some more work to do on that. So I, I think I'm going to have to invite Dr. Taylor to, to speak up to that a little bit.
So what Dr. Rogers is speaking of is we, we have a graduate profile, which, and I know that has been presented to the board in the past, which outlines the indicators, you know, of a graduate, of a SAC City graduate. And that was developed with the really intense community engagement around what were the key, key competencies that we wanted to see in a graduate. From there, what we've begun to do is benchmark that back, to your point, for member Ryan, at key grade levels between kindergarten through 12th grade to outline what, you know, like what does it look like for a third grader to be college and career-ready? In addition to that, to your, to your point about early literacy and early numeracy indicators for students, so that is an area that previously, we, we currently don't have those indicators. And it's an area that we definitely need to move into so that, you know, we can see, do students exiting out of kindergarten have foundational literacy skills? And then are they on grade level for first, second, third grade reading? And then again, like having those measures at each grade level to see if students are on grade level. And so that's work that we are moving into. It is a dearth in the district currently. We don't have those in place.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. My final comment before I'll turn it over to other board members who might have questions is really this idea that, you know, if we look at this data, I think it's difficult to not surmise that it is more challenging for you to both access and succeed in post-secondary education if you were a black or brown student. And so I think that that really merits a bigger conversation around how do we make the types of investments consistent with our LCFF monies in ensuring that we are scaling the best practices that are serving those students at individual school sites that should be instituted at every school across the district? And I do know that there are these bright spots across the district that we're very proud of. And really, what it comes down to is we need to make sure that those are not bright spots, but those are considered to be bedrock to all of our practices, irrespective of which of the 75 school sites a student resides.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you again, President Wu. I found this slide number nine very interesting. In particular, the Asian population.
Disproportionality one?
Yeah. So you have 20, is it, am I looking at this correct? 23% is what represents the population. But yet, we have 32% that have actually taken AP classes.
This is one, one slice of looking at the, the 215 cohort. So this slide is specifically looking at the whole pie, the denominator. They're looking at that 12th grade cohort who are in, whoever took AP. And within that population, 32% were Asian. So it would be an over-representation.
Exactly.
Yeah. There, with, with a look at the data in this way, you either have over-representation or under-representation because you're looking at a smaller slice of that pie, that first subset of, of that first slide that we looked at, which is the whole grade 12 cohort. And looking at the distribution of that cohort in AP, this slide looks at the slice of that grade 12 cohort who are in AP and the distribution of ethnicity within that.
Do we have that number disaggregated? Because I know that not all Asian Pacific Islanders are actually overrepresented in AP classes, right? So is that something that we track?
Yes. We have it available, yes. We don't have it currently available, but it can be made available.
I'd, I'd like to see future presentations with the Asian data disaggregated. This is very misleading. You know, I, I know for a fact that it's not the case for all Asian Americans. And that makes us think that Asians are doing fine when in reality, there are some in that subgroup that are not, and they're persistently not doing fine. So I'd like to see that broken down in the future. If you could do that, please kindly. Lastly, on your next steps, I find it interesting that you say, you know, IB programs are one of the key strategies to help students, you know, succeed in college. I had a conversation with President Nelson over at Sacramento State University. Met him while I was in, in training in, in Washington DC about this very subject, about college and career readiness, specifically how our students of color are requiring extraordinary amount of remediation when they graduate. And one of the things that he had mentioned to me over our conversation last Friday was that students, listen very well, students who graduate from Luther Burbank IB program are going into SAC State and need the least amount of remediation. Do you want me to say it again? Students who graduate from Luther Burbank High School from the IB program need the least amount of remediation of our Sacramento City Unified School District students who graduate and articulate over to SAC State. He's got data to prove it. Several months ago, I asked for an early-years program to complement the IB program over at Luther Burbank. We have a success rate at Luther Burbank that the president of Sacramento State University wanted to make sure that, he met with me to tell me this specifically. And yet, we ignored this community. We ignore the South Side of our students in Sacramento City Unified School District. When given a chance to put a school instead of a community center, we put a community center instead of thinking creatively and putting in an early-years IB program. Now, what I said earlier and months ago is now come to full, full life and has data to, to stand behind it. We need an early-years IB program in the South Side of Sacramento. Please do it. Board, please do it. You don't get a president of the university that wants to talk to a board member to tell them that fantastic news. And we see achievement gaps in this document all over the place, and we're ignoring them. And I want them to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Member Barry.
So obviously, this is a lot of information. And I agree with most of what the board members have said, but I just want to talk about one particular part. I was wondering, who decides to? Because I remember taking the S-Back last year. That's the Smarter Balance test, yeah. Last year as a junior. And who decides what grade levels are tested? Is that from the state? I just want to put it on the record that juniors, last year, at the end of the year, I took two SAT tests. I took an ACT test. I took, I had finals for every single one of my classes. I took one AP test, but I know several of the students who took up to four. There were tests everywhere. And I do know students that for the S-Back, they did not care and they did not try. I know students who just typed in answers and were done with it and left. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Royal. Do we have no place to go but up?
Thank you. Well, reality check. Thank you. There, there are many comments, many questions that I, that I have, but I will try to synthesize as best as I can. This report gives us lots to think about and lots to say. Obviously, this is one of the topics that we have been talking about for many years. And I'm just going to address like an elephant in the room, because this is a really difficult topic to, to address, and the fact that we campaign on it, we talk about it, we, with everyone, the achievement gap and the disparities in, in achievement have been enduring for so many years. And the question that, that really then comes to my mind is, what is the key question that we need to ask? I mean, because we can sit here and we can just blast you and, and, you know, you're here, you're presenting the data, and it's your fault, and you know what else we're going to do about it? Or what we're going to be asking about, what I really want to do is, what are we going to do about it? Right? I see a lot of questions that are coming up about the visuals that are so telling about who's achieving and who's not. But, but what's really coming to mind, because this has been enduring for so many years, is in drilling down, not only getting the data by, by grades, as Ms. Guillen said, and by, by site, what I really want to get at is, do we have institutional research to really then drill further? Because let's say we have this achievement gap with African Americans or Latinos. It goes year by year. So we can have you come here every year, and we can blast you, and we can say, what else are we going to do about it? And, I mean, I am just as dismayed and, and the fact that I feel a sense of urgency that we need to continue to do this work year by year, but we don't see that kind of change. So we see metrics that show a very marginal increase, three, four, five percent here and there. So what gives? I mean, what I really want to get to is, what is the real task that we have before us? Is it just to continue to lament that we have this problem? Or do we find other variables that we need to really figure out what is really causing this issue? It's, it's not for lack of caring, and it's not for lack of talking about it. And it's not for lack of caring. If I ask every single board member, if I ask every single staff member and every person in the audience, and I ask every single person, do you really care about this gap? Or do you really care about what's going on with our children? I'm not sure that I'm going to get a single person that says they don't care about it. So I think that we need to go beyond the surface and really then, just really be very blunt and very clear about what are responsibilities in each side and what is it that we really need to do to really start changing that gap? Because obviously, the conversations that we're having at the board, the meetings that we're having here, the presentations, that's not enough. So the question is, what is? And I think that there is that first step of getting this data. The second point would be then, what are the other factors that are influencing? In research, you have an independent variable, we have a dependent variable. So we have this issue of students that are not achieving, but what are the factors that are really affecting? Is it the household? Is it, what are the other support systems? And I think that the more we have a blunt conversation, a clear conversation, remove the emotion a little bit, and then really get to task, I think we would might, we might be able to have a better conversation on what is each, our roles in helping move the ball forward in a meaningful way? Because I think that when I listen to my fellow board members, we don't want to see just a marginal increase of 2% and 4%. The proportions of our population, which are the larger ones if you combine them, the, the meager increases that we're having one by one are not enough to be commensurate with the population size that they are. And that does not bode well for our entire community. So what I really want to get at is, and we won't have the time tonight, but is, we know this information, where do we go from here? What are the tools? What are, what other information do we really need to drill down? Is it more professional development? Is it the fact that we don't have enough resources? What are the other factors that really will give us a fuller picture? All the dimensions that really are available for us to make decisions on? Otherwise, it just becomes a very emotionally charged conversation that I think does more to paralyze us, rather than to really move the ball forward, to really bring the partnerships and the collaboration between the board and the staff and the superintendent and the community, and the bargaining units, and, and the parents, and, and so on and so forth. So that's where I would like to see the conversation move forward to. I have a litany of questions that I would like to drill down. I think some of our board members mentioned some of those items, right? I mean, the disparity on the AP testing, the achievement, all those issues I think are of extreme importance, but after seven years sitting on this board, it just becomes like a spinning wheel, like, you know, the issue comes up every year, and I don't see that ball moving forward. And I would like to dislodge this conversation from the traditional, here's the data, here's our pounding on the fist, and then we come back next year, and then here's a data, here's a report, and here's our pounding of the fist. So with that, I would like to hopefully engage in conversations with the rest of the board, the superintendent, and staff. Thank you.
Vice President Pritchett.
I would like to just really quickly address some of that. And so actually, the things that Board Member Royal brought up are the conversations we're having. I wish we could stand here, sit here, and say that there's a quick fix. There isn't. For us, when we look at it, it's an issue of culture, it's an issue of systems. You mentioned those as well. You know, the systems are, that you need to have in place. I, I think having aspirations is one part of it, obviously, and my staff has heard me say this, I'm all about raising the bar, raising expectations, raising standards for our kids to be, to make sure that when they exit our school system at the end of 12th grade, that they can experience success going into college or into career. So aspirations is one of those. But you can't do that unless you have the systems that support the kids to be successful. Otherwise, we're just going to get back into that same spin of, we did it, we raised it, but we didn't get any, any different results. So it will take, I think, for us, making sure that we really tunnel down on this data and start to identify the, the gaps that exist, which we see. But then where, where can we start addressing them? Another thing I've said to staff is that it's not, it's not, it's not a criticism of folks working in our system. There's no doubt people are dedicated, committed, passionate about the work they're doing. But for me, and for us, it's about the outcomes, and the outcomes aren't there when we look, especially for our kids of color. So we are having those discussions, we are tunneling down, but it's, it's a much more complex, you know, problem than we can imagine in terms of fixing the systems. And then, once we start to get on that track, then we can make sure that with this data, it will guide our decisions around programs, around allocation of resources, to make sure that we're getting those to the kids that need it, where they need it, so that they can access the core curriculum and, and be, be able to be successful.
So, and, and in following up with, with your comments, which I appreciate very much, is, as we move forward, month by month, as we have the, I see this as a short-term and long-term planning, right? We have this strategic plan that you're developing. But what I would like to see is from the superintendent on a meeting to meeting, month to month, closer update information on the things that he's doing as he's getting us closer to these tasks, to these things, instead of having to see them on a sporadic presentation before you. I think that these are huge issues, and I'd rather see them fill in and, and fill the gaps in my mind as they're moving forward, rather than to have a, a huge presentation where there are a lot of questions and a lot of gaps. And so I think it would serve not only me as a board member, but I think our staff that are listening to those, these board meetings and to the public, to get a continuous update on, okay, so we're working on this, and this is what we're achieving, and this is what we're moving, so that we know that we're on that right track, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Royal. Vice President Pritchett.
Thank you, President Wu. So first off, I wanted to thank Student Member Barry for being so blatantly honest. I have a daughter the same age, and I have had these conversations. I really don't think the students are taking the S-Back serious, and I, those conversations, some, and some homes aren't taking, they aren't taking place. And if they're not taking place at school, they're not getting it anywhere. So I'm hoping that we can start, you know, really rallying up the troops and getting it out there that this is serious, this is, you know, data that we're looking at. And the term college and career ready, since I've been on this board, we've been saying college and career, we want our kids to be college and career ready. What exactly does that mean? We've all been saying it. What exactly, we never decided, like, we've never really discussed and gotten down to the nitty-gritty of what does this mean? You know, when I think of, you know, the kids that have graduated over the last three years that I know personally, they're not college and career ready. They're, might have made it into college, but they've had to take remedial classes if they made it into a four-year university, or they've had to just go to a JC because they could not get into a four-year college, because they're not college and career ready. So I'm hoping that we're really going to start getting into that. And if we're going to, you know, float around that term on a constant basis, I know that this isn't an easy job. Kids are not cookie cutter learners. You know, this is not an easy job. But, you know, we're, we're constantly talking about this, and we really have to start talking about what is it that we want from them? What is it that we can make them learn, that can make them college and career ready? I've heard many of our, you know, the superintendent and my board colleagues talking about, talking to the, you know, the staff at Sacramento State, and that our kids are just not ready when they get there. So with that being said, I do just have a couple of requests, and I'm hoping that you can get to us. And just little notes that I was taking as you were giving your presentation about, just giving me some aggregated data of like, how many of our students are actually scoring the 1550 on the, on the SAT? We've thrown there on that term, that's like the, is that like the midline, the 1550?
Definition of college readiness, that's the minimum.
Okay.
For the SAT.
But it's actually broken down, English and math.
The SAT, but for the ACT. The SAT is just the composite.
Broken down for the SAT?
No, it's just the composite. But the ACT has a composite for each of the subjects.
So my daughter just took the SAT, and they broke it down. And her scores are broken down.
They will, but to derive their college readiness benchmark measure, it's a composite.
It's a complete score. Okay. So if we can get the aggregated data of, of how many students, how many of our students are actually scoring what it takes to, to go to a four-year university at the 1550 and being college and career ready? And then also, how do we, how are we comparing to other districts? I like to see that in this kind of thing. So we know, are, you know, are we doing, you know, a little bit better? Are we doing low? Is there things that we can learn from, from other districts? I'm sure that's probably the stuff that you've already thought of, but I would like to see it in these packets.
It might take a little bit of time, but the, the easiest and ready measures are our national and state comparisons, but we can work on the district comparisons.
Okay. It would, it would be nice to see similar districts to us, because not all districts look like us. Thank you.
Student Member Barry.
I just wanted to say one more thing that with all the talk that went on after I spoke about what to do next, that I, I may think it's obvious, but I'm not sure if everyone does, that I hope when we take those next steps, that most, at least the big majority of who we're talking to is students, and what they feel they need, and what kind of school they want to go to, and maybe why. You know, you talk to the types of students who aren't performing well and who are in the minorities, and you ask them why. Like, maybe a bunch of students have test anxiety, or maybe their, the APs that are offered at their school aren't ones they like taking, they're not subjects they like, so they're not going to take it. So I think that, at least to me, it seems very obvious if we're going to talk about student achievement gap, some of the first people we should be talking to are the students.
Thank you, Student Member Barry. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Ms. Martin. And I think that this data is really important, and I think that we can use that as we move into both our strategic plan and our LCAP discussions, because many of the students that are identified in this data are the targets for the LCFF funding. And then we can use that to identify to the parents and, and the community groups who we reach out to, is it, this is the data, do you, how do you want to spend that money to improve your students' outcome? So I'm looking forward to seeing that in the future as we move into our community meetings. So thank you. Moving on to item 10.3, link learning pathways, preparing Sacramento City Unified School District students for college, career, and life after high school. Dr. Taylor.
So good evening, Board President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. So following that presentation of the data, we're actually kind of excited to, to follow that, because we want to share with you, I'm just an update on a specific approach in the district towards preparing students for college and career. And that's one that you are all familiar with, our link learning approach. I'm excited to, to start off the presentation, because this is, is an approach to teaching and learning that focuses on both college and career readiness. The premise behind it, that in order for students to be prepared, they must have access and experience with a rigorous academic core and a rigorous career, work-based learning opportunities and experiences. So we're going to share with you an update on what is currently taking place in our link learning program. I want to thank, first of all, the, the folks that you see behind me who are here tonight to share with you the work. They have stayed late because this work is extremely important to them, they are invested in it, and they are seeing the impact and results of it. And so I just want to give them a huge thank you for being here so late tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe Stymas, who is our, our Director of the College and Career Readiness Office, to, to begin the updates and introduce you to the rest of the team.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. I'm Joseph Stymas, the interim Director of College and Career Readiness. It's my pleasure to introduce members of the College and Career Readiness Department as we present an overview of linked learning pathways, our district's signature approach, instructional approach that is transforming teaching and learning practices in many of our high school classrooms. This innovative approach is improving the educational experience of students throughout the district. When I think back to my days in the CTE classroom, I remember my most powerful teaching moments were the result of collaboration with my academic colleagues. When we developed lesson plans that linked our classes together with projects overlapping two or more subject areas, we saw more engaged learners and better comprehension of the subject matter. But linking academics with career technical education is only part of the puzzle. In fact, there are four parts to the puzzle. The four components of a linked learning pathway are rigorous academics, challenging career technical education, work-based learning, and wraparound student support. In 2009, our district adopted the linked learning approach in an effort to redefine high school teaching and learning experiences. These were our first four linked learning pathways. Hiram, I'm sorry, Health Professions High School, the School of Engineering and Sciences, Sacramento New Technology School of Design, and Hiram Johnson's Corporate Business Academy. Unlike criterion-based programs, linked learning pathways are open to all high school students. Today, we have grown to 21 pathways, five of which have earned the distinction of being certified linked learning pathways. Currently, our linked learning pathways are serving over 4,800 students across the district. To give you a better understanding about what a linked learning pathway looks like at the school level, I've asked members of my team to speak briefly about each core component and introduce guest speakers who will give you a glimpse of linked learning from their perspective, and explain how each of their pathways support our students to be ready for college, career, and life after high school. Let's start, start by looking at the first component of linked learning pathways, rigorous academics.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. My name is Khonped Lily Liam Tong Sumut. It's about a mile long. As the district linked learning coordinator for the past six years and going on seven years, I am very pleased to introduce to you the first component of linked learning, which is rigorous academics. Rigorous academics in linked learning pathway includes all of the A through G courses such as such as English, Mathematics, Laboratory Science, Histories, and Word Language, that prepare students to transition without remediation to the state community colleges, universities, as well as apprenticeships and formal employment training programs. In linked learning pathways, students engage in multidisciplinary integrated units of study that are project-based, problem-based, and career-related, and they demonstrate their skills and competencies with authentic performance-based assessments. Support to students in linked learning pathways include counseling, mentoring from professionals, uh, industry professionals, and supplemental instructions in reading, writing, and mathematics that help students master the advanced academic and technical content necessary for success in college, career, and life. Here to share more about rigorous academics in a linked learning pathway is Principal Marla Clayton Johnson of Health Profession High School, the very first pathway in our district and the first to be certified as linked learning.
Thank you, Lily. Good evening, Board President, members, and Superintendent Banda. Health Professions High School has been implementing linked learning as an integrated approach to education for the past ten years. In the past two years, our faculty has developed a UCA through G-approved courses that fully integrate career and technical education with college preparatory core classes, such as Medical English nine through twelve, Medical US History, Medical Spanish III, Medical Biology, and Medical Chemistry. Two of our pathway-specific courses, Medical Science nine and Medical Science twelve, were both rewritten to UCA through G standards and approved. Even our special education special day classes modify the UCA through G curriculum for use in their classrooms, so special education students are able to move back and forth seamlessly between SDC and mainstream courses. When we analyzed our data in terms of class passage rates and attendance, we knew we needed to develop a comprehensive wraparound support system in order for our students to be successful. In addition to continuing our restorative justice practices and piloting PBIS, we needed to immediately capture our ninth graders during their transitional difficulties from middle school to high school. In the summer of two thousand fifteen, our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Clemens, collaborated with Sac City College instructors and counselors to develop an articulated Freshman Foundations for Success course, piloted this school year, and modeled after the HCD one-ten course at Sac City College, starting ninth graders off with college credits at the beginning of their high school journey. This curriculum infused the district's SEL curriculum, Get Focused Stay Focused curriculum, and embedded work-based learning and college and career planning. At HPHS, all students participate in grade-level multidisciplinary integrated unit projects, and they culminate their four-year educational experience with a year-long defensive learning senior project. All twelfth-grade students investigate a community problem, partner with a mentor, and advocate for a solution. Our senior project combines high-level research, communication, and critical thinking skills, along with community and workplace investigation. The student outcomes and senior project components are reviewed by our industry and post-secondary community advisory board partners for accuracy and relevance, in addition to aligning with this SEUSD graduate profile. Ninety-three percent of HPHS students attend post-secondary institutions. HPHS boasts an eighty-seven percent four-year acceptance rate, while fifty-four percent of those accepted pursue a degree in the medical health field. These statistics validate that rigorous academics, industry integration, work-based learning opportunities, along with wraparound support systems prepares our students for both college and career, as well as life beyond high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla. Next, let's look at the second component of linked learning, challenging career technical education.
Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, members of the board and cabinet. My name is Lynn Ploker, and I am the Career Technical Education Coordinator. Career and technical education, commonly called CTE, is designed to prepare our students for high-wage, high-skill, and high-demand jobs. In the context of the career and college-ready student, CTE offers a framework for students to explore career possibilities in the context of a highly rigorous curriculum of both academic and practical application of skills learned in the classroom. Through a sequence of classes within their pathways, students gain proficiency, which can translate into both future exploration as post-secondary schools, or allow them to enter the workforce. Integrating CTE and ac, and academic curricula within a linked learning pathway helps bring both, bring more continuity, relevance, and purpose to the curriculum. And I'd like to introduce Ken Davis, engineering teacher at the School of Engineering and Sciences, to talk about what CTE looks like at SES.
Good evening, my name is Ken Davis, uh, Lead Engineering Teacher at SES. Uh, at SES, the solar regatta is one of the opportunities that students have to participate in as part of our engineering pathway. It's not only a fun day for the students, but students are able to demonstrate skills that they have learned in their classes. Our eleventh-grade students are responsible for engineering, designing, and manufacturing a solar-powered boat that competes in SMUDD Solar Regatta. Students start in small groups, competing among themselves to produce the best boat design. Each group presents their design in front of the entire junior class. From there, the eleventh-grade class votes on the best design, on the design they will manufacture to compete in SMUDD Solar Regatta. The Regatta Project is an example of integrated instruction at SES. From working on presentation skills in ELA classes, to analyzing numerical data in math classes, all eleventh-grade teachers work together to prepare curriculum to assist student in the success of this project. In two thousand fifteen, the students were awarded first place for Best Artistic Design and Best Mechanical Design, with a boat named the USS Stymas after their first engineering teacher. To prepare for opportunities like the Regatta, students take a number of rigorous courses beginning in seventh grade. As, as seventh grader, graders, students learn the programming language C through curriculum developed by the Engineering Department at UC Davis. As eighth graders, they expand their programming knowledge by using C and learning other programming languages such as Java and Python. The fundamentals of engineering are the focus of the ninth grade, with students learning about disciplines of mechanical, civil, electrical, aerospace, and computer engineering. In tenth grade, the students learn computer-aided design sufficient enough to obtain employment as an entry-level designer. The introduction to robotics is the focus of the eleventh grade, with students designing, programming, and testing robots to perform real-world applications. When students reach the twelfth grade, the students utilize industry-standard electronics, manufacturing, and programming platforms similar to a college engineering lab. Uh, it's definitely not all work, and the students develop, uh, through the curriculum, they become creators and problem solvers of real-world opportunities and expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I'd now like to introduce the third component, which is work-based learning.
Good evening, President Wu, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. My name is Katie Hensley, the Work-Based Learning Coordinator for Sac City Unified School District and the CAP Grant. Linking hands-on learning with academics is not a new concept. John Dewey advocated education through experience at the turn of the century. Further back, Maria Montessori stressed that all students learn through exploring their environments. Unfortunately, very few programs have consistently offered this integrated approach. As the needs of society have changed, districts have worked to incorporate more twenty-first-century skills. The linked learning approach offers work-based education that blends real-world problems with the skills and the knowledge to succeed in college and the workforce. These work-based learning problem, programs, offer both social and academic benefits for students. Students build connections between their classroom and the world outside of their classroom. Students own their programs, and learning is made authentic. And through the process, students develop problem-solving and soft skills. The work-based learning continuum offers students experiences ranging from guest speakers to the Capstone internship. None of this would be possible without the support of our industry. One exemplar of the work-based learning continuum for a Sac State student, sorry, Sacramento City Unified School District student, is Gabriela Vargas. And I would really like to introduce Todd Neal and Gabriela Vargas to speak about their mentorship and their internship at Aerojet.
Good evening, my name is Todd Neal. I'm the Chief Engineering Director of Advanced Programs at Aerojet Rocketdyne in Rancho Cordova. Really pleased to be here tonight to address you folks about a really, um, a positive experience that me and my colleagues at Aerojet Rocketdyne had, uh, having a job shadow with Gabriela Vargas. Gabby came into, uh, came into Aerojet Rocketdyne, she interviewed, we interviewed her like we would a typical college internship, which we have many of those every year at Aerojet Rocketdyne, from colleges all over the United States. So, uh, being this is the first time, we treated her like a college intern. Um, she interviewed with several of us, uh, me included, and, uh, the selection criteria, um, that we picked Gabby on was based similarly to what we do with interns. Uh, she, she was selected to come in as the, um, uh, as a job shadow, and, uh, it was like we hired her into the company. Um, she had to go through similar training that we would with a new hire. So she took core, uh, business and safety classes, I was Gabby's supervisor, and so, um, I taught, uh, I sat down with Gabby many times and, um, uh, met with her going over certain company protocols and, and things that I would do typically with a new employee. Um, I had responsibility for Gabby during her shadow, and we met, uh, essentially twice a week, but we were very flexible with our schedule. Um, after going over basic facility rules, core values, our organizational structure, and our company portfolio, um, I was able to, um, uh, take Gabby and show her our manufacturing areas at Aerojet Rocketdyne and give her a tour of our, um, a lot of our, uh, what I call the ump front areas of the, of the business, um, where we build, um, uh, propulsion systems for America's defense and, and civil space. And I introduced her to many of the, uh, colleagues that she was going to work with. Um, I also introduced her to the Vice President of, uh, Engineering for the, the company and many of my counterparts as well in the engineering functional disciplines. Um, I also took Gabby into, uh, an area that's a learning area for us. It's, uh, where we take a lot of new hires, uh, to show the basics of rocket propulsion. I showed her many rocket engines that, uh, were built here in Rancho Cordova back in the nineteen-sixties and showed her the basics of rocket propulsion. Um, Gabby is an amazing learner, and she picked up a lot of things that take a lot of people a lot of years to do. She did it very quickly, she's a very impressive young lady. Um, in the following weeks, Gabby met with technical leaders in each of our engineering disciplines. Um, I would organize, um, I would organize, uh, job shadows, uh, on a weekly basic basis. Gabby would come in and meet with these technical discipline leads. These are senior people, they're fellows in our organization in structural dynamics, in thermodynamics, in ballistics, in, in core areas of our business. And, uh, they would spend an afternoon with Gabby, um, showing them what they do, taking them to meetings, showing them how to, showing Gabby what they do on the computer. A very real-world experience for her, and Gabby in some cases got to actually sit behind the terminal and play with some pretty cool toys, so it was a good experience for both. The program was very well-received by the engineers that participated in it. We're very excited to continue to do this in the years to come. Um, not only for these engineers who love to show their craft, but, uh, our, in our industry, we're immersed into the STEM. Uh, we've all dedicated our lives and careers to STEM. The very fact that we show up and work fifty to sixty hours a week in supporting America's space program. Um, so to be able to share that craft with, uh, somebody as enthusiastic and bright as Gabby is very exciting to us. And I'm very excited to follow Gabby through her educational career, through college. I will absolutely hire her as an intern when she is ready, and that, uh, I would like to hire her as a full-time employee at Aerojet Rocketdyne. I think she would really benefit our company, and this is the type of caliber student that we wanna see in our company. So thank you very much. Now I'd like to introduce Gabriela. Thank you.
Oh, hello, I'm Gabriela Vargas, and I'm a student at the School of Engineering and Sciences. Through my six years of engineering classes and participation in my school's robotics team, work-based learning experiences are strongly concentrated in, in the hopes of exposing students to real, to the real world. Each student expo, is exposed to designing software, manufacturing tools and processes, and in programming software. With each year, more information is introduced to our students in order to provide a high level of understanding specifically in the field of engineering, as is done through the incorporation of integrated units. From personal experience, this type of curriculum has proved invaluable and has led to unexpected opportunities. For example, I'll be speaking at a summit on work-based learning next week. I was also given the first opportunity in Aerojet Rocketdyne history to become the first high, high school intern. For years and months, I had the opportunity to meet a variety of mentors from all departments and obtain a general feel of day-to-day operations. While interning at Aerojet, I was fortunate enough to meet a man named Kip Lucas, a mechanical engineer at Aerojet. As I walked into the office and introduced myself, something caught my eye, it was a 3D printer. He had hoped to impress me with this technology and show me the hat software behind it. Instead, I was able to impress him by explaining that I use this software on a daily basis at school, and was even able to print some parts that he needed. This by far was the best experience I had while interning at Aerojet. All of this was possible because I was exposed to real-world technology at my school. This impressed Aerojet enough to now seek three more high school interns. So what does this all mean? This means that what is being done at SES is clearly right on track. If a company with such high recognition and respect in the world of aerospace is using the same technology being taught to high school students, then SEUSD and SES must be doing something right, that the software, manufacturing capabilities, and exposure to technology in the world is giving our students an edge and ensuring that they are fully prepared for the world ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, um, Joe, can I get a motion to extend the deadline for adjournment to eleven? Ten to eleven, okay, we, we don't have to take it off. Okay, so we're gonna extend the deadline to, uh, ten fifty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Gabby. So as you see, the last piece of the puzzle is wraparound student support. Tonight, uh, you've heard from a principal, teacher, student, and industry partner who shared with you about how linked learning pathways provides wraparound support necessary in preparing our students to become ready for college, career, and life after high school. Wraparound student support is embedded in each of the other core components. When we put all the pieces together, the results are students who are prepared to succeed in life, students just like Gabriela Vargas. So what have we learned and what are our next steps?
High-quality pathway implementation depends on the team of staff who are responsible for a cohort of students. This calls for a master scheduling in a way that pathway students are cohort-scheduled in at least three to four pa, courses at each grade level. And teachers have common thread. Pathway staff collaborates often and functions as a community of practice. They engage in annual pathway self-assessment and develop action plans to continue working on areas needing improvement towards linked learning certification. To improve cohort, cohort scheduling of pathway students, training and ongoing coaching support will be provided to site administrators and teacher leaders who are in charge of master scheduling at their sites. To, the goal is to maintain student enrollment in pathways through graduation. To sustain high-functioning pathway communities of practice, leadership training, and linked learning coaching will be, will continue to be provided to pathway leads who are teacher leaders of their team.
To maintain rigor, a pathway program of study must be aligned to the common core state standards, next-generation science standards, and career technical education standards, articulated with post-secondary. This requires continuous updating and upgrading of pathway courses, offering A to G sequence, and where appropriate, honor AP courses. The College Career Readiness Department will continue to support- The College Career Readiness Department will continue to support pathway staff in updating CTE courses to align with the new CTE standards, current industry practices, and where appropriate obtain UC A to G status. The way one course meets the two objectives of preparing students for college and career. In addition, pathways will receive continued support aligning their curriculum, instruction, and assessment to the Sacramento City Unified School District graduate profile. In the end, students will be able to demonstrate their readiness for college, career, and life after high school in their defense of learning senior year.
And bringing work-based learning to scale for all students in Sacramento City Unified School District pathways calls for us to take a regional approach because neighboring districts will be competing for partnership with some of the local businesses. This means working collaboratively with neighboring districts to develop infrastructure to address equitable access to partnerships and work-based learning opportunities for students throughout the entire region. Pathway students will experience a continuum of work-based learning, ranging from job shadows to the Capstone internship.
Our team is very grateful this evening to have had this opportunity to present link learning pathways as an equitable approach in preparing our students to be ready for college, career, and life after high school. Any questions?
Before we move on to questions, I think we have a public comment.
Yes, President. We have a comment from Liz Guillen.
Hi, I'm Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. I think that this program is probably the diamond of the district, and it seems to me that anybody who listens to the presentation will want the SES opportunity available to all of the students. And I want to highlight the fact that our Career Tech Ed program in SAC City has the opportunity to expand because of a new state block grant that was authorized by the most recent budget, and that's the Career Tech Ed Incentive Grant. The purpose of that grant is to provide short-term funding, it's a competitive grant, for three years, and it has to be matched, and the matching dollars will likely be LCFF. So you see why I would be concerned about the expansion of this program using LCFF dollars, since you all know my love of LCFF and how it's used. I have passed out for you a cut-and-paste that I did of the LCAP actions that relate to career preparation and linked learning. And you'll see that the LCAP contains a total of $3.7 million of funds from different sources, not just LCFF, but mostly LCFF, and mostly supplemental and concentration dollars. And as President Wu said earlier, those funds are supposed to be used principally directed to the needs of unduplicated students, low-income English learner and foster youth. So it's clear that any new expansion is going to address their needs. And I just want to point out one other thing about my other handout. It was just a summary of this budget trailer bill block grant, and I encourage you to review it so that you're prepared when the district presents what they're doing on it, and especially the questions, the minimum standards that have to be met and then demonstrated. What's clear is that the state wants to give this money out fast, on the front end, and it's probably going to go out by January or February. It's going to ask questions later, and when the questions are not answered to their satisfaction, the state is required or has the authority to bring those dollars back. And the minimum eligibility standards require a lot of data collection, similar to the presentation you heard earlier, but even drilled down further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guillen. Nice try, Liz. Member Royal.
Thank you, President Wu. Very briefly, I just wanted to congratulate Gabriela. And the only question or the only request I have is, there's a whole infrastructure to help students like yourself, and so the only ask that I have is, as you move forward, you're a role model to many more students, and I only ask that you take it upon yourself to really reach out to as many students as you can, to inculcate in them the value of what you're learning here, because we got you, right? But we want to reach out many, many more young women, minorities in particular, to get into the STEM field, because you guys are vastly underrepresented. So the value that you see here, I hope you take not only for yourself, but please spread the wealth with friends, family, whoever else you can come in contact, because you can become a very powerful role model to really spread that. You know, if we did a good job with you, I want to make sure that we do it with even more. So, thank you.
I'm Ryan.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking all of the educators who presented on the link learning pathways. I understand that what you undergo is a labor of love and that you're putting in much more than your 40-hour work week to ensure that your students are successful, so I'm very grateful to you for that. I had a couple questions regarding the presentation. I've been very familiar with link learning and following it since its days as career ladders as it was first launching with the Irvine Initiative. And I wanted to ask specifically a question under the certification as a high-quality link learning pathway. You noted in your presentation that five of the 21 pathways the district currently has in place are certified as high-quality pathways, with one more seeking certification in 2016. What does that mean? And I guess, you know, my concern then would be, why aren't the other 14 or 15 pathways certified as high-quality, in fact, link learning curriculum?
Sure. You will notice that the five that are certified have been around for a little while. So we have some of our pathways that are just getting started, and so there's a capacity building. A few years ago, we actually had some issues around teachers being relocated, and there's a lot of time and effort that goes into training the teachers in the link learning pathway approach. And so sometimes we'll see setbacks, we'll see changes in administration sometimes that requires a little bit more re-education, but for the most part, we are making positive progress. The beauty of the certification program is there is a series of metrics, there's goals that our pathways must reach in order to hit that certification. And several of us are new to the department. I'm not new to the district. I've been in the district for 33 years, but only in this job for three months. And Lily has been doing this for six years, so if she has anything she'd like to add to that, I would gladly have her step up to the microphone.
I'll just add that the certification process, it's a very rigorous process. It's an external review. One of the areas is that they have to have had a graduating class to be up for certification. And so, you know, just the process of getting those pathways ready, it's definitely the goal that all 21 of our pathways will become link learning certified, and it's definitely a high standard to aspire to. So you talk about big, hairy, audacious goals. That's one of ours in this department. But Lily can share a bit more about the process.
I would love to share a little bit more. In addition to the pathway in order to be qualified to go through the certification process, they have to be actively, four years actively, doing the work of continuous improvement. And that work of continuous improvement is against 24 rigorous criterias, and that work is done online. It's an online system where they have to continuously upload evidence that shows that they're making continuous improvement in those 24 criterias. So I would encourage looking at the link learning certification criteria under the seven essential elements, which are really rigorous. And it has to be four years of continuous improvement before you're actually qualified to go through the certification process.
So I have a couple of follow-up questions. Are all of the 21 link learning pathways A through G aligned? In other words, are the link learning pathways both preparing students for, for your college should they choose, and/or career?
So I would say in process. So we have, just, we're trying to align our CTE courses for A through G alignment. Definitely the core coursework is A through G aligned, but it's getting all the electives and all that through A through G. And so there's like robust rewriting of courses that's happening within the district for that work to occur.
So I've had a chance to visit SES and Health Professions High, and I think you're doing remarkable work. Hats off to you. And one of the things I appreciate is the honesty about sharing that while many students will choose not necessarily to go into these fields, their aspirations are significantly lifted, as is their preparation, and so I definitely recognize that. I do want to mention, you know, looking at the 21 pathways as a whole and continued areas of improvement in instituting these pathways with fidelity, I have heard, you know, there's been some variance in quality of the pathways, and I think that that's a very real criticism, right? And in talking to our peers over at our Los Rios Community College District, I was alarmed to find out, and I see some hot hands nodding, that students were leaving some of these pathways and going into community colleges, 70% of our high school graduates will do for post-secondary education, and really struggling. Struggling because having done this project-based work that's so relevant and rooted and in collaboration and all of these wonderful principles that we know to be key to link learning, they did not feel like the traditional classroom environment for college met their needs. And so I know that there's been a grant, I believe, established to look at greater alignment between Los Rios Community College and the pathways to buck some of that dynamic. Are you aware of that, and can you speak to it?
Absolutely. We're working with what's called the Career Pathway Trust Grant, and our grant is a partnership with Elgrove. In that grant, not all of our 21 pathways were written into the grant, but of course, we're leveraging different funding sources to support the articulation aspect of it. We're working with the community colleges to really align not only the courses so that students get college credits while in high school, but also the curriculum, meaning around the college readiness aspect of the academic that student will bring to the table when they go to college, is really aligning how do we do social-emotional support, how do we do reading, readability, and mathematic skills that are ready for college level. So a lot of the curriculum articulation are happening in what we call pathway communities of practice. We've just launched our health pathway community of practice where the pathway program at community college are now having conversations on a regular basis about aligning their curriculum and assessment so that students are being monitored whether they're ready for college skill work.
Thank you. And then I think my last question is really just around the data itself for students who've gone through the certified pathways, since those are pathways that have been in existence for a longer period of time. Have we been able to demonstrate that those students who have gone through a certified link learning pathway and continued on to post-secondary education are in fact assessing at higher levels of college readiness versus needing remediation and persisting at higher rates?
So what we're seeing particularly, like the data that we have so far, is really kind of grounded in graduation data. Where we're challenged is in some of the data systems and being able to disaggregate that data just for the pathway for those students, and then reporting that back out. And so I think that's an area, again, an area for us to grow. We are in a partnership with SAC City College and SAC State, the Sacramento Pathways to Success, which is similar, like the college promise that you outline. And a part of that is just coming to some agreements around data sharing to see how our students do. Being able to just, I mean, it will sound simple, but it's actually a little challenging. It's just tagging students within particular programs and then tracking them as they move through the system.
Well, I really hope to see that done, because I think what you speak to, Dr. Taylor, is so right on and powerful. To be able to, if we can, demonstrate that disaggregated data shows that our Black and Brown students, our Asian Pacific Islander students, through these pathways are performing at much higher rates than they would in traditional pathways, is meaningful, and it helps really ensure that we choose or could choose to direct resources to expand these programs. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Taylor, Lily, Joe, the entire group that's here, the students, our business partner for being here so late in the evening, and I think that just demonstrates not only the commitment, but the passion that you have. And every time I have conversations with any of my staff around link learning, they always speak so excitedly about the opportunities that are there for students. And I especially want to thank Joe Stymas. You know, he stepped into this role at kind of on the last split second when we lost our former director, and on one hand, I'm really appreciative that he's doing that. On the other hand, I feel bad, because I think Joe had intentions of retiring this year. So he put that on pause for a year, and we're very appreciative of that, Joe, so thank you.
You made me an offer I couldn't refuse.
Well, Dr. Taylor and your people, I think, want to thank you all for your presentation. It's good news, and moving forward for our kids, so I'm thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, 11.
We have a little present for you before we leave, though.
Oh, okay. Do you have to report this?
We have to report it.
Well, it's just a poster that you can put up in your offices to remind you of the programs that we have that are preparing students for college and career-ready. It also marks the pathways that are part of the CAP grant, as well as our criterion-based programs, and as well as our California Partnership Academies.
Thank you, Joe. Member Cochran.
Thank you. I just received an instant message from someone in the audience who pointed out quite aptly that there is no pathway for education or educators. Is that something we're going to get?
That's something we're having a conversation around, and we're looking into it. The issue with starting new pathways is the capacity for new pathways, and sometimes we have to take pathways, some pathways have to die for other ones to live. But we're looking for alternatives to those sort of things. That's something that's very much in our mind. We think that we can encourage some of our criterion-based programs to encourage their students to look at education as a career, and we're starting to look at reaching down into the elementary and middle school, trying to plant those seeds.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Hey, no more lights. Item 11.0, future board meeting dates and locations, November 19, 2015, 4:30. Closed session, 6:30. Open session here at the Center Center. And the one in December is December 10. That's a different date than you might be familiar with, so December 10, 2015, 4:30. Closed session, 6:30. Open session here at the Center Center. Item 12, do I have a motion to adjourn? Board, Student Member Berry.
I've moved to adjourn.
Thank you. And I heard a second, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.